Welcome to the August 18, 2020 Board of Commissioners meetings. Please silence your cell phone pagers and other electronic communication devices. Agendas are located at the back of the chambers. We also have a speaker request form. If you'd like to speak on any item, please complete the speaker request form located in the bookshelves in the back of the chamber. Ms. Hawley at the left of the dais here. You can hand them to her and she will give them either to me or Gary. We will have a moment of silent reflection and then the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. Thank you.
By allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So Ms. Hawley, do you want me to announce it or you want to?
If you would.
Okay. We do have a transportation plan hearing. If you'd like to sign in, there's a sign-in sheet out in the hallway if anybody would like to sign in for them. Next, we'll have review and approval of agenda. Ms. Hawley?
Good morning, Commissioners. At this time, I'd like to ask the board to remove item number six from today's agenda, please.
Thank you, Ms. Hawley. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda with the deleting item number six?
Move to approve the agenda with the exception of item six.
Moved by Roskinex, second by Drews. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Ms. Hawley, the consent agenda, please.
The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of August 4th, 2020. Number seven is to acknowledge disinternment permit, number 1350836. Number eight is to recognize and thank the volunteers for the month of July 2020 from Human Resources and the Fire Administration. And finally, number nine is to declare surplus for the purpose of sale or disposal, 1 Glock 17, serial number BCHC 521.
Thank you, Ms. Hawley. Do we have anyone in the public who would like to remove five, seven, eight, or nine from the agenda? If not, anybody from our commission who would like to remove any items five, seven, eight, or nine from the agenda?
Move for approval.
Second.
By LaCroy, second by Drews. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next, we have a 2020 Central States Fair kickoff. We do have a proclamation and then I will read that and then we'll have Ron Jeffries speak, if that's okay. This is executive proclamation, Pennington County, South Dakota, 2020 Central States Fair, August 21st through the 30th, 2020. Whereas on Friday, August 21st, 2020, the 75th Annual Central States Fair kicks off with 10 full days showcasing the county's best in animals and produce, crafts, and wares, along with entertainment, rodeos, rides, and fair and food. Whereas, the Central States Fair is one of the region's largest county fairs, which tracks nearly 150,000 attendees each year by showcasing agricultural tourism in our community alike. Whereas, the Central States Fair plays an important role in the growth and development of 4-H youth. They have the opportunity to showcase their projects, animals, speaking skills, and knowledge, all while receiving acknowledgement and recognition for their handwork and dedication, hard work and dedication. The Central States Fair allows them to share what they have learned with the public, promote the 4-H programs, and educate the community about the benefits of 4-H youth who participate in the fair, learn responsibilities and sportsmanship, while strengthening their confidence and communication skills. Whereas, the Central States Fair is beloved tradition celebrating the agricultural past, present, and future of our community. Whereas, it is most appropriate for the people of Pennington County to join together as we celebrate the 75th Annual Central States Fair in Pennington County, South Dakota. Now, therefore, let it known, let it be known, the Pennington County Board of Commissioners encourage all citizens to visit the Central States Fair on August 21st through the 30th and enjoy a true community event that has positively impacted our community for 75 years. Ron Jeffries, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. I'm Ron Jeffries, general manager of the Central States Fair, and I prepared just a very brief 45-minute presentation for you here today.
Briefly?
We're super excited about this year's fair. You know, there's a lot of challenges, as everybody's aware, going into this fair. I applaud the efforts of our board of directors in working through some plans to make this fair a very enjoyable fair for the public that chooses to come out and participate with us. We've got a number of different cleaning options going on at the fair, including a clean team constantly cleaning within the carnival, our crew that goes out and cleans everything from just pickup trash, but also wiping down places that we have never had as much concern about in the past. Now, everything gets cleaned every year, but it's just a much more vigilant approach to this year's fair, and I think it'll be a great welcome addition to the public, for the public this year, to see that kind of effort going into this year's fair. We do have a ribbon cutting Friday at 3:00. We'd like to extend an invitation for you to come out to that. And of course, the proclamation, I think you're prepared to read that at that time. We've got a couple of new things that are going on this year. First of all, we had quite a challenge with our concert lineup. We were working with Nashville Stars, and two weeks we confirmed with everybody that they would be in place, and right before, as we made our announcement, within a day and a half, three of the different acts said we're not going to be able to make it. We scrambled to see if we could salvage the Nashville acts, not a possibility. So rather than just do two nights of the Nashville acts and incur all the costs that goes with the Nashville shows, we postponed all those to 2021. But we did rebuild with two nights of concerts, we think will be a great lineup for people that want to come out and have a festival-type seating, our festival-type event. And we also added another event called Octane Addictions, which is a Supercross, a freestyle motorcycle jumping show. And the neat thing about that is, it's all the guys that do Superman's and backflips and all the stuff on the motorcycles.
Wow.
Well, as it turns out, none of those guys have been working all year either. So we were able to get some of the top guys in the nation to come. We've got, four of the guys that we have coming are X game medalists, so they've been competing at the highest level in the U.S. and have been, since it's not an Olympic sport, they do the X Games, the daredevil of the Olympics. Four of them are medalists in the X Games. We've got the number-two rated guy in the nation coming out for that event. We've got one of five guys in the nation that can do a front flip on a motorcycle. So I mean, in terms of something that's going to be fun and exciting, we lucked out in getting a great replacement for a deal like that, and we're very excited about that. Our 4-H exhibits will be open and on display. Open class will not. We do have a ton of livestock coming in that first weekend. Longhorns, they'll have a big show and sale and horn measuring competition. Youth livestock shows, Dexter cattle shows, all coming in that first weekend. Count's Car Club is going to do a car show for us this year, it's a new addition. And more vendors than we've ever had before. Again, vendors who have purchased items clear back last fall for this year's run of events and then were unable to attend those events are now looking to Rapid City to come to set up shop and move their goods. So a better selection, much more like the stock show vending options than we've had before. So I'm excited about that. I do want to say that I don't know if the commissioners recognize this as often as we should recognize it, and that's that we get a ton of help from the many other offices here, from highway to the Sheriff's Department, Buildings and Grounds, providing us with all kinds of service and help throughout hosting this event. And we're greatly appreciative of that, and I know they're in the room here, and I just want you to be aware of how much they support us being able to produce this event, and that means a great deal to us. I will tell you, I'm very proud of my staff. We felt like we were jugglers, and every week somebody would throw us in another thing to try to juggle, and we came out with what we think's going to be a fantastic fair. We invite the public to come out and join us. It's 21st through the 30th. I will mention the carnival. So we've had Carnival Americana out of Texas, a loan provider in the past. This year, he was not coming north. He did not have any of his other shows that were taking place. We joined with Sioux Falls, Huron, and Aberdeen, and the three different providers that provide each of those shows, each brought 10 rides. And that same group is coming out to do Rapid City. So we'll get the best 10 rides from each different provider, carnival provider, all coming together to work under one contract here, very similar to what they had in Sioux Falls and what they'll have at the state fair. Very fortunate to be able to have that and provide that with a very extensive COVID plan, I might add, too. So we're excited about offering that to the public as well. Questions?
Any questions? Commissioner DeSanto?
Ron, why don't you talk a little bit about how you're arranging additional grandstand space to provide for social distancing if people choose to do so?
Sure. So normally, you know, we sell the general admission passes, it's good all week. We chose to limit the number of tickets for every event, and in order to do that, you can't sell passes, anybody can come any night. So all the events went to individually ticketed events. We lowered the price on events across the board. We went to a straight $15 per ticket for every event, from Supercross races to the Mountain States Ford Demolition Derby, to the two nights of concerts, the Octane Addictions, and the three nights of rodeo. The Extreme Bronx is the only item that is different from that, and that is a $35 ticket at the Extreme Bronx finals. But otherwise, that also was a lowered ticket price, but all ticket prices were lowered, and that allows us to limit the number of people. We can count number of tickets sold by event. I can tell you in advance, we'll have people that will not be able to get into certain events because we're sold out. We cut our capacity in half, so we aren't taking full grandstands like we normally would. To accommodate as many people as possible, we've made arrangements to add some additional bleacher seating for some of the events, but still, we know there will be people that will be turned away by not getting their tickets in advance. So that does make a big difference this year, no passes, individual tickets. The other thing I'll mention along the line is, the PRC Extreme Bronx is a televised event, televised on the Cowboy Channel, it goes out to about 100 million homes, televised live this year. Last year, it was delayed tape recording. This year will be televised live, so we'll be under the spotlight or the microscope, whichever, as we go through this event. But they also choose to televise all three nights of Range Days rodeo. So the Central States Fair, the Black Hills, Rapid City, South Dakota is going to get more television coverage here in the next week than we've had in any time in history for hosting those events, so.
Thank you.
And I will mention, Mark, also, that we do have, our board of directors formed a COVID task force plan, or a COVID task force to work on our planning, and we have met every other week throughout the planning stages of this to make adjustments and watching numbers, hospitalization numbers, case numbers, modifying and going through our plans to make sure that we can do everything that we're capable of doing to provide a safe environment.
Thank you. Ron, and I attended that meeting, and you guys have been working hard on that preparation to make sure, you know, you guys are ready for this fair this year. I like going to the fair. I'm going to be judging some of the 4-H kids, and it's pretty awesome just to go there, and it is outside, a lot of the events are outside, so I think it makes it a lot safer environment, and plus, you're social distancing, so we appreciate that and your, some events, it's going to be a little bit harder than others, but the bottom line is, this fair is just an amazing fair to go to, just a lot of things to do, and like I said, most of it's outside, so.
Correct.
I'm hoping it's one of our bigger fairs and that people, like you said, from all over the five-state region or even further, come to this event. And the big event for the Bronx is just a huge thing for Rapid City and Pennington County, so we appreciate your staff and you and all the volunteers that make a difference for this fair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Roskinex.
Ron, congratulations for picking up the pieces and putting them back together and making this, it had to be tough, getting those phone calls, and we got to go with a Plan B, we got to go with Plan C, but it sounds like a really good event, and hope to see you out there.
Hats off to my board and staff, they've done a phenomenal job in putting these together.
Well, you tell them that we all said, "Good work."
Appreciate that.
I think they're at about Plan H.
That is true.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
I'd make a motion to approve the chair's signature on behalf of the entire commission for the executive proclamation for the Central States Fair.
Second.
Commissioner Drews first, second is DeSanto. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, and then we'll all be out there at 3:00, and we'll be wearing our Central States Fair shirts, if that's okay with our commission.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Have a good day. Next, a great request for use of floor decals seeking CASA volunteers. Ms. Kayla Tubols?
Thank you. I don't have anything quite as flashy and as exciting as motorcycle jumping to talk to the commission about this morning, but I am the executive director of the Seventh Circuit CASA program, and as a program, we have been serving the children of Pennington County since 1986. Our program recruits, trains, and supports volunteer advocates who make visitation with children in foster care because of experiencing abuse and neglect. They form bonds with these children and advocate for their needs, both in court hearings and along the way in between hearings, which only happen maybe every three to six months, depending on the point in proceedings that each case is at. So it's very important for children in foster care to have advocates who are looking out for their medical needs, their social needs, their educational needs, and because the foster system, particularly in our area, is extremely overburdened, it's important to have these extra supports outside of the facility or foster home that children may be placed in in the moment. So we are part of a national association that provides this service, and my agency is a standalone 501(c)(3) that, as I said, has been operating in Pennington County since 1986. Additionally, we serve Fall River and Custer County as our outreach programs. Right now, today, there are 540 children in foster care in Pennington County. Pennington County tends to have the highest number of children per capita, in some years recently, just the largest number of children of any county in South Dakota, which is pretty shocking compared to the size of many Haha County population-wise. So it's very important that we're out recruiting new advocates on a regular basis. As you can imagine, even though we have amazing dedicated advocates, people sometimes really need to take breaks in between cases and at a certain point retire because it's an emotionally exhausting volunteer position. Because really, on a normal year, we would do about 30 recruiting in-person events over the course of the summer, and almost all of those have been canceled or taken to a virtual platform since March. We are really needing to come up with new and creative ways to recruit advocates, and one of the ideas we were inspired by was to create these floor decals for social distancing that would still have a pitch for our volunteerism. I provided a kind of a rough proof yesterday, and there are two changes that I wanted to make the commission aware of, the two edits that we're going to make in our final draft. One is, since not everyone is familiar with how to use the QR codes, even though once you know they're wonderfully simple to use, and I did notice that the county commission has a QR code on the agenda, so perhaps that's something the commission is already familiar with, but we'll be adding our website to that decal also. And just recently, our national association updated the slogan, our designer wasn't aware of it, so it won't be Change a Child, or it will be Change a Child's Story instead of Lift Up a Child's Life.
Thank you.
But we are asking to have permission to provide those to your facilities. They would be vinyl stickers that are appropriate for linoleum, carpet, wood, any surface, and then they're treated with a special nonstick laminate that makes them very durable for different types of sanitation processes, but also makes them, as I said, nonstick, or non-slip, so that there's no danger that people could hurt themselves.
Thank you, Ms. Kayla.
Thank you.
I think your stickers and your program and what you're doing with the barcode is pretty amazing. CASA is a very positive program, but for me personally, we have care campus here that do many amazing things as well. We also have many nonprofits in Pennington County that if we started one, we'd probably have to start doing more, meaning we'd have many, many requests. It's my personal opinion that if we were going to do something like this, we probably would promote the things that we do in Pennington County, meaning the care campus that we do all kinds of different things that have to do with many of the nonprofits that we work with in Pennington County. But I'm just one of five, Ms. Kayla, but again, I think your program and what you do is pretty amazing, the works you get done. I do have a friend that's in CASA that helps many of the kids that you're talking about, and you guys do do some great work.
Thank you.
Commission?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Ros, or DeSanto?
Kayla, is this a, can I describe what an advocate does, if you don't mind?
Absolutely. So as I said, we recruit and train our advocates. They go through background checks and a 30-hour pre-service training where we educate them and introduce them to players in the state's attorney's office, the judges, Department of Social Services, and we operate under a three-way memorandum of understanding, pardon me, with Department of Social Service and the Seventh Circuit Courts. So once an advocate is assigned to a specific case, which may be one child or maybe a sibling set, they visit those children on a regular basis. They have, through their order of assignment, that is made by a Seventh Circuit Court judge. They have access to medical records, educational records. Together with my staff, we assess the needs of each particular case. One child may have extremely high, for example, dental complications, and that advocate needs to help the placement that they're in, make sure that the plan for rehabilitation will get them on track so that they're not behind in their speech or nutrition, they're not having other secondary health effects. Other children may just simply need that extra individual time and attention. Sometimes advocates would help advocate for sibling visitation and interaction, and if we have large sibling groups, oftentimes they're separated because of availability of placement and put at different levels of care, even perhaps dependent on their behaviors. So an advocate may help facilitate or ensure that sibling visitations are happening. The advocate would stay with the case for the duration, if possible. I had an advocate recently who, after 12 years of following one child through the foster system, finally finished her commitment to our program. So people might be on a case for a few months, and they might be on a case for years and years, but the idea is that a CASA court-appointed special advocate is a support person who is there for the best interest of the child. Our hope is that family reunification is possible in that case plan, but the best interest of the child is our focus and our obligation, whether that is with the family or in a completely different environment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
Chair, you know, I understand what Dev is talking about, about letting one in, and we have many more who want to. You know, quite frankly, I'm not that concerned with that. I think the idea that you came up with is fantastic, with the QR rating to get the attention of the people, whether it's here or other places and so forth. I don't see this as a permanent thing. This is, I think it's a temporary type of way to get communication out in a time that's limited, of getting together and being able to promote this. I think the work that you guys are doing is fantastic. I guess, I, you know, I see both sides, but on this, I kind of see, you know, this is part of what the commission's for, is if somebody comes forward with a request, we can make exceptions or put restrictions on it to where it could be for up to six months, limit the number of them. If it's in the court area or something along those lines, I'd be open to that, but I think this isn't a permanent thing, and I think it's a good way to get the word out.
Do we have a motion or more discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
I'd like to ask Mike Cool, and I know Mike was not made aware of this probably before, but Mike, if you'd come up, tell us if you have issues when things like this are placed on the floor for your people, when they're doing their cleaning, et cetera, removal of those, just tell us your thoughts on it.
Good morning, Mike Cool, Director of Buildings and Grounds. I think I heard her speak to how those things are made and what, how they're applied, and it sounds like there's thought been given into them using an adhesive or something that can be removed fairly easily. It'd be nice to maybe see what one is like before we committed to installing, if that's your wishes, but relative to if we were going to install those and the challenges that we might face in terms of removing them down the future, I would maybe ask that we go a little easy on how many would be installed. I would assume that we'll start seeing some buildup around them over some time, and I don't think I heard how long that we might have them in place, but.
I think the purpose is, the proposal is to have them, you know, so they indicate the six-feet spacing, so however long that goes on, I mean, it could be a few months, it could be years.
Okay.
So I believe.
Okay. So that is, the intent is that we would use them as markers for cues or something?
Yeah, I think they'd have to be designed to indicate that that's what they're actually, the purpose they're serving, instead of just putting them on the floor.
Yeah.
They need to identify that need. Madam Chair, if I can continue. Thanks, Mike, I appreciate your response to that. I do agree, I think this is a very worthwhile cause that they're into. I know that they need volunteers, like many other organizations do. I'm not hugely in favor of putting these on the floors. If we could find maybe window space to put one rather than on the floor, I'd be more supportive of that. So, I mean, I think that the chair is correct, that we'd probably get many more requests to do similar things in our buildings from other nonprofits.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
That's an interesting point. I was going to ask Mike the same thing with the floor stuff. I mean, you're seeing it all over in our community right now. I do like the idea of a trial, of maybe putting, giving us a few to be able to put on some windows at our Buildings and Grounds maintenance discretion, and maybe some, our bulletin boards or something, you know, something, the paper for the QR reading and so forth. Is that a possibility? I'd be asking Karen.
You're asking her?
Yeah. Karen, is it a possibility to get a couple of them?
Kayla.
Is the question to me?
Yes.
We can make flyers, and we have made flyers for years that are posted usually in front of the treasure building, and if that's the preference of the commission, then that's understood. The hope with the floor decals, which we have been in communication with Print Market, who's a local printer who is producing those for Common Sense and many of the markets here in town and has some, you know, professional experience and is working on their best practices of producing those in a way that is most aesthetically pleasing, safest, and doesn't leave any residue on any of the types of floors that it can be applied to afterwards. The hope with those was, we're not in a time where people are necessarily browsing, necessarily spending a lot of time looking at extra kind of postings and whatnot, and I think we're all kind of assailed with signs just about the basic regulations for each building. So the hope that we had had with the floor decals was that they would be something different, and they would be encouraging social distancing, and I think that's a great idea to put something explicitly stating, you know, the six-foot distancing, and I'm happy to work with our designer on that. But the hope with the floor decal was it was something that people would actually notice and connect to while they were engaging in their personal business.
Commissioner LaCroy, do you have a follow-up?
Just with Mike, or maybe somebody can answer. What are we using now for spacing requirements? And that's mainly with our, I believe, with our treasurer's office and maybe lines.
Right now, we have, it just happened to be some material that was available within the department when we were originally looking at trying to create some type of marker than, to keep some separation, to let people understand what six-foot are. I'm concerned that those are going to be a real challenge when we have to remove them off the floor going forward, but, you know, something that releases better might be a better solution, but we haven't pulled any of those off yet. we haven't pulled any of those off yet. I just, I don't know what they are. All they were was an adhesive material that was that wasn't wasn't overly sticky, but I am a little bit concerned if they're on there for a long time, they may not come up for ease.
Just like any other ones on floor after being mopped over and
They do, they will start kind of having buildup around them over time.
So, in other words, what we have right now in there is, is we already have something, so we entail taking those off and putting new ones down is what my guess is. You know, I just struggle with this. I'd like to see at least one or two, to give people the opportunity to use that QR scan. That's kind of where I'm at. And I'm not sure, Kayla, where would be a good place? It's in the courthouse or, you know?
I mean, in terms of seeing if they produce any results or anything, I would advise that if the commission's interested in trying some out, that we try and use them by the Treasurer's Office, where we have the majority of people moving through a line. I'm certainly not opposed to trying them. I'm curious to see whether they work, if they create any problems or not. But that would be a commission decision. I understand that you face challenges relative to other organizations that are going to want to do a similar thing, and that's something I would leave to you guys in terms of determining how that is. I'm, from a perspective, how, what kind of problems they cause relative to cleaning would be my concern.
So, Kayla, the program says Seventh Circuit CASA program. This is through the courthouse. Did you ask if, in the courthouse, Judge Feifley or anybody, if you could put these down for social distancing in their building?
I haven't spoken with Judge Feifley. It tends to be that there are two sets of individuals frequenting the courthouse and spending time there. We're well-known within one set, and the others that, quite frankly, might not pass background checks for our program. But I can definitely speak with Judge Feifley about that, and I had originally, I think, spoken with, I'm sorry, I can't quite remember the name of the gentleman, but the gentleman who is speaking about grounds and floor concerns, because I had originally called him directly to inquire about what the process would be, and of course, he referred me to the commission, which makes perfect sense. The the line that inspired me was standing at the Treasurer's Line for myself to register a vehicle and seeing just kind of, you know, some tape of some sort on the floor and thinking, this is really something that people are looking at, and there's a big cross-section of our community. And just like, you know, the city has the flags downtown that sometimes people can sign up for, but of course, there's limited space as well. I thought if there was a way that we could innovate some new way of connecting with the community, then it would be to our advantage in connecting with new volunteers.
Thank you. I think your program is good. It seems to be representing more in the courthouse than Pennington County. I mean, it represents all over South Dakota and other places, but it seems to make more sense to put it more in the courthouse. Again, we do have the Care Campus where, for me, if I was going to put something representing Pennington County, and it represents many areas in Pennington County, we do not, with the building being separated, it seems more sense that we would put a Care Campus-type thing on there. And I also think it's missing somewhere that it needs to have a six-feet distance on it. So, that's my opinion. Like I said, your organization is amazing what you do, but I think we do already have a pretty awesome and amazing program through the Care Campus, and there's many different areas that that represents. And again, sticking them on the floor, and I don't know if that's a great idea, just from trying to peel stuff off the floor, get things off the floor. The other thing is, what was I going to say? I forgot. Anyway, bottom line is, again, if we're going to do something like this, it seems like we'd represent more something of what we already do here in Pennington County.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Ross, can I?
Mike, is there a sign at the Treasurer's Office, that line, that already says "social distancing"? Use the markers to space yourself?
There had been in the beginning. I guess I can't say that there's still something there, but we had a sign on a post that said that the markers were for six-foot separation.
Do you have, sorry, Commissioner?
The one thing I do agree, if we were to do that, the only place that I think it'd be effective would be the line in the Treasurer's Office. And if we were to do that, I would say that we set a timeframe and a number of those, so that we have an idea exactly what we're getting into, if we were to do that.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
Just speaking from a marketing perspective, nothing else. I don't think that the program of the Care Campus is something that we necessarily need to market. I think that people come to that through other means. This particular program, the CASA program, is something that is needed to be marketed in order to let people know about the program and how to get involved in it. And so, just strictly from a marketing background, I think that that would make, it would actually make more sense to market something like the CASA program. It's also a way to, it sounds to me like it's a way to keep people out of trouble in the future by having people watching out for them and making sure that they're following the guidelines and getting through life in a manner that would provide that later on down the road, they're productive citizens. So, I don't necessarily have a problem with it if there's a timeline, if there's a specific number of, you know, like we just use it in the Treasurer's Office. I like Mike's idea that let's check it out first, maybe have one at each entrance and see, and keep them down for two weeks, and then try and pull them up and see what happens. But it almost sounds like a good alternative to getting rid of the tape things that might wind up being there permanently. The longer they stay there, the worse they'll get. And we've got someone else willing to provide them for us. So, I mean, to me, it sounds like a decent idea, and we can cross the bridge of other people asking later on down the road when other people ask. Frankly, she's thought of the idea. It's a great idea. If somebody else comes along and say, well, you know, we've already somebody else already thought of the idea.
Madam Chair.
I just think it's a precedent, you guys, and you're going to be switching it, and Mike's going to be pulling up and taking down different signs. And are we saying a week for each company that wants to come in? Because once one has an idea, again, how many nonprofits do you want to put on the floor for social distancing? And, like I said, I think the idea is good in one sense, and the other,
Madam Chair.
We're good. Commissioner DeCray.
Hopefully.
Hold on. Commissioner DeCray.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mike, I want to make a motion, but then I'd like the floor afterwards, if I get a second.
I think.
Is that okay? I'll make the motion. That way, I'm
We've been doing that, so you can, DeCray. Go ahead.
Okay. I'd make the motion to approve up to ten floor coverings for a trial period to see how they work, with a maximum time limit of to be reviewed in six months, or let's say, three months. If I got a second.
There's a motion?
I'll second that motion. I was actually going to
Motion by DeCray, second by DeSanto?
Yes, the substitute motion of three months, if you would have stuck with six months.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Three-month trial?
Yeah.
Commissioner?
And this is my thoughts on it.
DeCray, follow-up, please?
This is my thoughts on this, is I get the president's type thing that we could be setting up, but these QR readings, I mean, are fantastic to get information out. They thought of it. It's a good way to promote it. If other people come forward, they come forward just like this, we approve them as that goes, if we seem appropriate. I mean, what better way than when you're in a line going down, that there's different organizations that you probably never get a chance to hear from, that you could check out and see what's going on, you have the time. And that's why I think it's such, it's a good idea for us to help our community as a whole to be able to do this. I've done floor maintenance. I know it's it's, but ours are kind of non-minimum war maintenance, and a lot easier to go with the technical materials that you've used. So, it's not like we're waxing over them and that type of thing, but there is going to be some, but we have some already. We're already doing it. So, it's not like we're creating a problem. We've already got some. But I would like to get some feedback from you and your crew about how they hold up. You know, they're non-slip, so forth. So, that's my thoughts on my final one.
Commissioner Ross, connect first, please, and then DeSanto.
I guess I'd like to point out that hopefully, in three months, we won't need those.
Yeah.
Relative to other organizations wanting to do this, to do this, and hopefully, if it doesn't go to last more than three months, I doubt that they're going to sit there and design them and have them made. There's some expense and time and effort to that, so. I just want to point out that in three months, hopefully, we don't need those anywhere on our campus.
Mike, any thoughts?
I guess the only thing I would maybe ask, I don't want to sit there and observe the people in line, so are the spots working? And trying to make people separate? I guess that would be the question I have. It certainly is an indication that how far people should be staying apart from, whether when I'm in the store or something, I do. A lot of people will observe them in the store. Will stop on the tape mark or something to to maintain distance out of respect for somebody else. But I've also heard that we've had people touching one another in line.
Thanks for sharing. Bottom line is, too, guys, I think it needs to show somewhere six feet apart if you're going to put a sign on there. It's not just signs put all over the floor. It needs to have something about social distancing or six feet apart. So, Kayla, if you're going to put those on the floor, they might want to have something about six feet apart somewhere on it before it's approved. So, maybe bring it back to us, or I don't know how that goes, but.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
I would make a substitute motion that is the identical motion to what Lloyd made, however, that the stickers include something that indicates that they're markers for six-foot distancing.
That could be a friendly amendment.
Friendly amendment?
Amendment.
Okay. So, Kayla, what they're saying is they want to approve putting these for the Treasurer's Office, if I'm correct.
Correct.
Line, and then that you would put a six-foot distancing sign or something on there that says six-foot distance, where people could see that from the floor. Mike, correct?
Understood.
Okay.
And I would say, I would be happy if Mike would like to speak with the designer in the print office. As I said, they are vendor here in town who's been printing the high-quality floor stickers for convenience stores, grocery stores. They had some very clear ideas of what works best. When I spoke with them, they insisted upon a circular design, because any corners would initiate peeling. They talked about the exact types of materials, adhesives, that they use to produce the best result, have the colors hold up, have it be non-stick, and not leave any residue on the floor where it had been placed. And they are quite costly, so I appreciate at least the three-month idea, because each sticker is going to cost somewhere between ten and eighteen dollars to produce. So, that adds up for a small nonprofit like ourselves, that we think the investment is worth it. Like I said, I was inspired by that particular line at the Treasurer's Office, and at least for the time that I was there, I saw people really looking at their feet at the tape marks that they were standing there.
Thank you. So, the other thing is, is in three months, we'll review, are we saying nonprofits can put those on the floor? Are we saying businesses can put those on the floor? I mean, what is the precedent in which you guys want to set this? Because if you're doing six-foot distances, like you said, what if it's not done in three months? Are we just going to start approving different people to put their stickers for six feet for advertising on our floors?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Ross, connect.
I would think that we'd cross that bridge when the time comes. We got the choice, yes or no, anytime.
I think once you start a precedent, then it's kind of hard to say, okay. You should probably set parameters or something for putting advertising on our floor, just like they do benches for the city and stuff. So, anyway, we do have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No. One no from Commissioner Haddock. Thank you. Item number twelve. Request to declare tax deed property number 0039631 as surplus and accept sealed bid offers. Mr. Dan Schur? How are you?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Commissioners, for giving me some time here. You were given some information on this property, but what this comes down to is I'm requesting that the property, there's a property number. It's Lot 4, Brock subdivision, located in Rapid Valley, be declared surplus by the county in order to accept sealed bid offers to dispose of that parcel. The little history, in 2017, this property was secured by the county via the tax deed process and foreclosure process through that, which is about a four-year process. It's about seven years into that now. The typical way of disposing of this property is by auction, by the county auditor sets up an auction. In the past, I believe it had been annually or every two years. I don't believe there's been one for about four years, and there's not one for the, in the foreseeable future as of now. So, I'm just requesting to put that up as surplus, accept sealed bid offers, so the county can dispose of that parcel.
Any questions, board or motion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeCray.
Where exactly is this property located? You know, it's in the valley, and we get all the
I don't know that there's, I don't know if there's an address, but it's off of Twilight Drive.
It's Twilight.
In Rapid Valley.
3960 Twilight Drive.
Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway Superintendent, it's at the corner of Jolly Lane and, well, not quite the corner, but Jolly Lane and Twilight. There's a house on the corner. It's the lot just to the east of that.
So, you've got two motions, if the board chooses to sell the property, or you can wait till the auction?
How long have we had this property, Madam Chair?
2017.
2017, Commissioner. Thank you, Ms. Holly. And it's .18 acres.
Madam Chair, do you have any idea when our next auction is?
Commissioner, or Ms. Holly?
There isn't anything scheduled in the foreseeable future. I mean, it costs the county money to put on a public auction, and so, we hold until we have enough properties to make it worthwhile, and at this point, we don't.
And we have done this in the past as well, with a couple of properties.
Just recently, we didn't.
Yes, sir.
I'll make the motion to surplus the property.
Second.
I'm in a motion in a second. Ms. Holly, do we have to make the motion one and two, or just one or two?
We need to have clear direction from the board how you would like to dispose of the property, so it would be the both motions, if you choose to do it by sealed bids.
Okay, so the motion with Ross Connect and Druze is to move to declare parcel 0039631, Brock subdivision Lot 4, as surplus for the purpose of sale by means of sealed bid. That'd be your first motion, if I'm correct, Commissioner? That'd be your first motion, if I'm correct, Commissioners. Okay? All in favor say aye.
I got one question, please, Madam Chair.
Right, go ahead.
Since Joe seems familiar with this property, Joe, is there anything with the Highway Department that could be used for that property or?
No, we have a, a lot just directly across from it on Jolly Lane and Twilight there that we use for, for different things. Uh, but this one, I was just familiar with it because last year at some time, uh, the utilities put a, uh, or West River put a, a line through the utility easement on it. So.
Okay. Thanks.
No problem. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Uh, we need a motion for, to move to authorize the Chair to appoint three real property owners to conduct and file an appraisal report for parcel 0039631 pursuant to SDCL 6-13-2. Do we have a motion to that effect?
So move.
Move.
By LaCroy and second by Drews. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Holly, do you have Dan's number? Okay. Holly will be calling you, Dan.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Next will be a Title III public input on proposed project, natural resources. Uh, Scott Guffey.
Morning, Commissioners. Scott Guffey, Pennington County Natural Resources Director. This is the time that we have to do our annual, uh, public comment period to authorize us to spend, uh, the Title III dollars that come from the Secure Rural Schools and Community Act. Um, so you got Title I, Title II, and Title III dollars. Title III dollars come direct to the county. And those monies come from a percent of timber sales receipts sold on forest lands in Pennington County. So in there you can see total of a little over $432,000 total was, uh, was granted to Pennington County for use in 2021. Uh, Title I mainly goes to schools, some to roads. Then Title II goes to the rack and then Title III comes direct to the county. And, um, I can outline what we can use those funds for. Um, we've kind of, in our provisional budgets, kind of outlined where those dollars will go. So in order to spend those for 2021, you have to open up for any written or, or oral comments. Uh, we've done the 45 comment, for advertising for 45 day comment period. So I don't believe we've gotten any.
You haven't got any comments. Is there anybody in the public at this time would like to talk about the Title III public, uh, projects or give any input on them? If not, um, motion to take public comment following proposed project for 2021 to wildland fire, fire equipment training, increasing the protection of people and property from wildfire, emergency response equipment or vehicles, search, rescue, response and training and other emergency services as allowed by Secure Rural Schools and Self-Determination Act of 2000, 2008.
That would be my motion.
Thirty thousand, $254.40.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
Scott, are there restrictions on the use of this money? I mean, what's in, included in this motion, is that restrictive in nature that that's?
No, that, we, we kind of leave it vague. So we, it allows us to use it in multiple ways. So, yep.
Do we need a, uh, motion or we're just taking input today?
You, you do need the motion and then in the minutes, it will notate that no public comment was received.
Okay. And the motion was made by DeSanto, second by Roskinick, if I'm correct?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
Scott, can you, can you kind of explain through some of the process of how you determine what projects get, uh, approved, what you're using it for? Is it a, a board that you have or is it another group or?
On Title II, there's a resource advisory committee that the Forest Service appoints. But for our Title III dollars, um, I kind of added a, uh, kind of a summary on what the authorized uses are, are used for. And the main, the three that we use in four in Pennington County is search and rescue. So that's dependent on a search and rescue event on forests. Um, $5,000 goes to the fire administrator and a lot of times he use, it has to be used on, on the forest where there's a fire or search and rescue incident. And then a little over 5,000 goes to natural resources and we use those for our shaded field break work on the forest. So.
Thanks, Scott. Cause I, I wanted to know, public to know that someone goes to our fire protection and so forth. So that is a good process.
And all the funds have to be used on the forests. Cause that's kind of where they come. And that's the purpose. It's because we're losing tax dollars because it's in federal lands, that's where we get a little bit of that money to go back on there.
Thanks, Scott.
Thanks, Scott.
Madam Chair, one more question.
Commissioner Drews.
So Scott, the, the, first of all, you, the funds need to be spent and then you get reimbursement. Is that how it works?
Correct. Yeah. We'll, uh, we'll document the expenses and then, uh, then, uh, we request the funds back from the, so they reimburse the county for them. Yep.
Thank you, Scott. Anything else to share?
Nope.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Board. Motion by DeSanto, second by Roskinick. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next is a 9:15 public hearing on the five-year county transportation plan. Superintendent.
Good morning, Commission. Uh, this is a, another step in our quest to, uh, apply for big funds on January, I think, second or third is the deadline. Um, this plan was put together, uh, prior to, you know, we, we've revised it. Uh, we, this plan has been kind of in place since 2015 when the wheel tax was first passed. Um, we've always maintained some sort of in-house plan, but talking to Mark, um, this morning, we kind of used the state or the STIP fund or STP five-year plan as kind of our five-year plan. So this is kind of a, a, more of a tailored plan to, to what we plan to do. Um, there's projects on there, both consisted of, uh, bridges, um, in-house projects as well as contracted projects such as overlaid or large grading projects such as, uh, South Rockford Road or, or Sheraton Lake Road. We've got most, you know, most of the bridges that need to be in, or are in dire need of, of rehabilitation or replacement are on there as well. Um, it's, it's really a guideline, as you know, we had a, we had a change to that rehabilitation plan here, what, about six, eight weeks ago when a, one of our bridges on Nemo collapsed. So, um, and then also with the passage of the wheel tax and, and you guys allowing us to proceed with the, uh, designing of Thunderhead Falls bridges this year to apply for big funds that pushed that forward a year or expedited it. So we're, we're hopeful that we can get those, uh, actually three bridges applied for, for big funds, um, January 2nd of, of 2021 for construction in the same year. So, um, with that, I guess I will stand for any questions.
Any questions?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
Thanks for bringing this, this forward, Joe, and explaining just how that those big funds are going to be able to, you know, we had these planned, but now being able to use some of those funds, we're going to be able to do more, you know, and I think that's important to notice. And then unexpected of some of these bridges that happen, just unexpectedly, we're, we're going to be able to work with. So thanks for bringing that forward.
Right. And then I'll, I'll note here, um, this also opens up. So there's, there's replacement funding and there's also rehabilitation funding with the big funds. Um, I think rehabilitation, they awarded 98% of the, uh, applicants. Um, so they're really trying to push that rehabilitation so these bridges don't get to the point where they need replacement. So, um, we are looking at that. We're waiting for our, uh, bridge inspections that we'll get back in September to take a look and see what exactly we want to apply for, for that as well.
Okay. Thanks.
So Joe, just to, uh, on our transportation plan, are we, are these projects all different districts in Pennington County?
There's, there's projects all throughout different districts, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Um, we do have a public hearing time. Is there anyone from the public who would like to visit about the five-year county transportation plan or ask, um, our Superintendent Miller from Transportation, any questions? If not, do we have a motion, please?
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved by LaCroy, second by Drews. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Items for monitor, 9:15 budget supplement. Uh, this is a MacArthur Fund for states attorney sheriffs and just donation and contribution of revenues. Ms. Cindy, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. Cindy Muller, Pennington County Auditor. Um, yeah, this is supplement 20010 and it is to supplement the MacArthur State's Attorney budget in the amount of $25,500 and the sheriff's budget within that same fund for $229,500. And to also do the revenue supplement of $255,000. This one's done just a little bit differently because on the accounting side, we don't get to account for the revenue until we've actually spent the money. That's why this is not coming from, uh, an assigned reserve.
Move for approval.
Moved by LaCroy.
Second.
Second by Drews. Just one question. Donation contribution revenue in the amount of, so those two totals are 255 or 255 is different, right?
The 255,000 should be the, um, total of both of those added together.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. Do you have a motion by LaCroy, second by Drews? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
And then we have the transfer of some alcoholic beverage licenses, um, from the country store at, at, uh, at the Forks to country store at Three Forks. We have the retail on off-sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine, retail on off-sale wine and, wine and cider license, and the transfer of the retail on sale liquor license. We'd ask approval for those transfers.
Move to approve.
Moved by Roskinick.
Second.
Second by Drews. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cindy. Next is Emergency Management, Dustin Willett. And this would be COVID-19 update. Mr. Willett? How are you, sir?
Fantastic. Thank you for asking, Chair. Uh, good morning, Commissioner Haddock, rest of the commission. Um, Dustin Willett, Emergency Manager. Uh, so all things COVID. So I think some of the numbers speak for themselves. Uh, and again, uh, numbers are dynamic. They're, they're a snapshot in time. Uh, the trends are what the trends are. Uh, but if we look at, uh, active cases in Pennington County, say at the start of the rally, uh, or 113 cases that were active in Pennington County, we look at today, it's 114 cases that are active. So again, um, we fluctuate by a couple, uh, in all of these stats, we fluctuate by a couple. Um, but our trend lines, uh, the, I think the most significant trend line in terms of Pennington County and where we're at with, uh, our current, uh, COVID-19, um, situation, at least, uh, as, as far as we know from the data that we have, is our trend line is still down. It's not plummeting, it's not dropping off a cliff, but our trend line, I mean, our highest, uh, was back in early June. That's when, that's when we had the most numbers. Uh, we had a, another, uh, smaller peak, if you want to use that term, uh, in mid-July. Uh, and then there's a couple outliers. So when we have a skilled nursing facility that has a cluster, uh, when we have Camp Judson that has a cluster, when these little clusters come up, obviously those data points are anomalous when it comes to the rest of the data point. But the trend lines take that into consideration. Um, and when we trend line, uh, the data that we have out, our trend line from our high, from our high point, uh, in, in early June, our, our trend line has been down and continues to go down. Uh, doesn't mean it's going to continue to do that by any stretch of the imagination, but, uh, that's what our, our data currently shows. In terms of hospitalizations, the data I pulled right before I walked in, uh, has 18 patients hospitalized at Monmouth. So again, our highest back in, in, uh, again, early, early June was up in the 40s and, and we have 18 currently hospitalized. So, COVID is still with us. COVID is still here. Uh, obviously it's affecting all of our lives on a daily basis, but in terms of our numbers, uh, they fluctuate by, by onesies, twosies, uh, every day and the trend line is generally downward right now.
Madam Chair.
Did you have anything else, Dustin?
I, I certainly stopped for a question.
Commissioner Roskinick.
Dustin, are you communicating with your counterparts up in Sturgis? See, uh, if they, uh, in the next two weeks, we get some kind of a spike from the number of attendees to the rally?
So we have, um, uh, an information sharing platform that if something happens, uh, throughout the day, we share information. And then we have weekly actual, um, uh, virtual meetings with all of the West River Emergency Managers. So we're touching base with everybody weekly. And then if something significant happens during a day, we actually touch base during the day. So yeah, we're in constant communication. Don Hunt-Rodz is my, is my counterpart up in Meade County. Uh, the interesting thing, uh, it was just like after the, the, the 3rd of July celebration at Mount Rushmore. Um, then everybody watches the numbers for a few weeks to see what happened. So, um, Sturgis obviously has, is winding down. Uh, people are certainly going to be looking at data trends to see what happens. Now, one thing that's different with, with the, uh, the conclusion of the motorcycle rally versus what happened on July 3rd is there are some mass surveillance testing, uh, plans in the works. So the city of Sturgis is going to test, uh, uh, you know, a certain, uh, portion of folks within that community. Um, the Department of Health is working with public safety organizations, police departments, fire departments, ambulance providers, uh, to test. Uh, this is going to be an interesting one. They're testing, voluntarily asymptomatic responders. So if you're with a fire department, uh, a police department, a ambulance service, West River, um, and you are asymptomatic, but you want to be tested, the Department of Health is going to facilitate that, uh, post-Sturgis. That's going to be ramped up here in the next few days. So again, an interesting, it'll, those will be interesting numbers when they come back just to see what they show us. So, uh, the answer is yes, we're in communication. Um, everybody's going to be paying attention to the numbers. Uh, there are some different testing regimes that are going to be implemented with over the, over the next week or so. So we'll, uh, we'll have to see what the data, data spits out at us.
I believe there is a number of private entities doing tests in Sturgis. With that being said, do they have to report to the state if, uh, somebody tests positive? Is there?
They do not. Nope. That's a completely self-contained, uh, uh, operation, um, not overseen, not certified by the state, uh, not reported to the state. Uh, the state did everything they could in the mainstream media to make sure that the, uh, the public knew that they washed their hands of that whole operation. That was a private commercial operation that was going on.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah. So, so, uh, since I, I have the pulpit, uh, I was going to take a minute or two. I know it's been a long meeting so far, but, uh, uh, so, so Emergency Management always looks with an eye to the future. Uh, uh, we're always trying to look out as much as we can. Uh, I just wanted to take this opportunity, uh, because we've been so inundated by COVID and because people are starting to get so much fatigue and the messaging is, is starting to become a drone rather than, than really impactful. I just want folks to remember, uh, that October signifies our official flu season start. So, uh, flu season is coming. Flu season typically runs from October through May. Uh, the CDC guidance is that everybody have a flu shot by the end of October. Uh, that is still valid recommendation. There are, uh, 16, uh, last I counted, um, uh, commercial operations, Walgreens, Walmart, uh, et cetera, uh, the different pharmacies that we have in Rapid City in, in Pennington County, uh, that are currently offering, uh, different. You can get the flu vaccine a lot of different ways. Nasal spray, shot. There's, there's several different ways to get the flu vaccine. And we have, uh, again, multiple organizations that are already offering that. Um, some of the, 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 the information that's out there says right now might be just a tad bit really, uh, to, to, to get your vaccine. It is available. Um, but the, the recommendation certainly is by the end of October to have your, your flu vaccine. We expect flu and COVID to be circulating in the population at the same time. Um, one of the benefits, one of the positives of our, of our, uh, uh, current COVID, uh, environment is everything we're doing to protect ourselves from the transmission of, of SARS-CoV-2, uh, is effective in, in preventing the transmission of, of flu virus. So infection control is infection control. If we maintain distancing, if we wear masks, if we wash our hands, uh, if we're paying attention to our health, um, uh, those things that help us, uh, check the spread of COVID-19 will, uh, check the spread of flu as well. So infection control is infection control. Uh, the one other piece I just wanted to throw out there was, I guess there's two things, but the one other piece I wanted to throw out there is there is a new, uh, flu option this year. It is available locally, again, through those providers I mentioned. Um, and that is there's a high dose regime. There's a high dose flu vaccine for individuals 65 and older. Um, so if you're 65 and older, uh, I would certainly talk to your provider or talk to a pharmacy, uh, about the, the high dose flu vaccine that, this year. That's a new thing, um, and it's here and it's available. And then the last thing, I guess, to, to bring it back to COVID.
Dustin, just, just one more thing. Have they tried to run the tests on a comparison of flu, flu data compared to COVID data? And put that out there in any way?
In terms of?
So because people are with COVID are kind of creeped out on a lot of their issues, um, I think if someone did some kind of data or put some of, some other data, meaning the flu. flu that has been around with us for a few years, put that data comparison to the flu, to the COVID data, because the flu's coming, basically, so they don't think they have COVID, and they know they have flu, and they also know the data on that. So I think it helps, because if you, if you just keep putting COVID, what happens is, is they do, they just get COVID crazy, is that what I call it? When I've seen it in beauty shops and other things, that I think there needs to be some other, like, the flu is a, is a, one that goes around, it's influenza, it's something that has probably data all over the place about how many people have had it, how many people in South Dakota have been tested. If we tested 5 million people in South Dakota, would 400, 4,599 have it or had it? Yeah.
Good point, Commissioner, and I will absolutely work with staff and, and maybe Holly and others in terms of some infographics to compare the two. The data's there, the CDC has that data. Now, the interesting thing with actual data sets is flu season runs from October through May. So our 19, 20 flu season ended in May, and, you know, March, April, May was when things were starting to ramp up with COVID. So we really don't have overlapping data sets yet. Typically, in South Dakota, and it's mirrored here in West River to some degree, February tends to be our peak for flu.
But I, but I bet you if you ran that October-May one, it's probably, that's my, my bet as one person, I bet you it's higher than what the COVID is that's going around. So maybe I'm wrong, but just people having it, people having symptoms, people having the same issues with COVID, because I respect that people need masks and, and all the COVID things going on in a sense, but I also respect that, like you said, disease and these things been going on a long time.
Yep.
Has it done some positive in areas for people washing their hands more and doing things that are more disease control? I think it has been, but like I said, I think a lot of it's made people COVID crazy, so.
Don't disagree. So interesting, just so last year, October through May, the, the total for the 2019, 2020 South Dakota flu season was 14,777 positive tests. Now, the issue with flu tests in South Dakota and across the nation is when it's flu season and you get sick, there's a whole lot of people that don't go get tested, they just assume they have the flu, they recover at home. And so that number only reflects positive tests, and we know during a normal flu season, outside of the COVID-19 environment, normal flu season, there's a ton of people that don't get tested. So 14,000 and change were tested positive in last year's flu season, and we had 33 deaths attributed to that in South Dakota from, from last year's flu season. So we'll absolutely pay attention, I think the infographics and getting some information to distinguish between flu symptoms and COVID symptoms would be great. There's obviously a lot of overlap, but there are a few differences that, that we can highlight. So.
The other, and the other thing is, is you didn't get paid for influenza. So when you get paid back and you get hospitals and stuff, without sounding mean, you don't get paid back for that. So people are going to be a little bit different on their skews and, and what they're doing, not just South Dakota, but other places. So to be up straight, that's what I'm seeing the most of. So without sounding mean to anybody or anything about this issue, but it, it's become COVID crazy in, in many areas, including cash flow and other things that you can get from COVID, so.
This next flu season will be interesting. The CDC does have an approved test out that tests for both COVID-19 and flu together. So it'll be interesting to see how that works out, how that plays out. So the last.
It'd also be interesting to see for employees and different things, how we're going to test between COVID and flu, and they're going to call in and say COVID, not just our employees, but otherwise, and it could just be flu. So are we like going to be testing everybody to see if it's COVID or flu?
The language in the CARES Act, the language in, in some of the, the COVID-specific legislation, and, and certainly John from HR can, can clarify this, but I don't think, I don't think the current language allows us to, to get to that level of discernment. I think if, if somebody claims symptomology and attributes it to COVID, I think, I think that stands currently with legislation. So again, and, and John might be able to speak more.
And one more thing, sorry. So the people that I've known, whether it be 80 or 50, believe, that have had it, I believe they had influenza, because they had the fever, they had the chills, they had the same thing as what influenza had, and pretty much figured it was influenza until they got tested. So that's going to be problematic for many people in, in any state.
Yep.
When that starts coming around. So just food for thought, and your departments, that's 17 department heads, keep that in mind.
So one of the big takeaways to remember is, is flu and COVID are, are somewhat similar in symptomology, preventing them are the same. Infection control is infection control. It works for flu as well as it works for COVID-19. The other thing to remember is that in our, in our more severe cases, that the generalized treatment and care at medical facilities is largely supportive. So again, when you're really, really sick with the flu, there's, you know, certain things that the, the, the medical profession does to try to, to support you as your body recovers, same thing with COVID. So in terms of, of treatment and some of those things, right now, there, there's a lot of, of parity between, between flu and COVID, but I agree, it'll be a very, very interesting season to see.
So Dustin, how does the hospital determine that from COVID or the flu, since they're kind of more symptomatic the same?
So the hospital's able to test internally within a matter of hours. So if they have somebody that they suspect, that's symptomatic, that they suspect of being COVID-positive, they have that answer definitively with, from their internal lab in a matter of, of 45 minutes to an hour and a half. So yeah, the, the hospital knows that.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
Dustin, for the new vaccine that's going to be out here in the next few months, are the ingredients of that vaccine available to the general public?
I'm not sure I understand the question, Commissioner, I'm sorry.
Well, I'd like to know what the vaccine has if I'm going to take it. I just wondered, or some people do. So I just wondered if, I'm talking about the vaccine itself.
Yeah, so there's.
For the flu.
Okay.
Oh, for the flu.
So yeah, the formulation, the, the CDC, so every year, the, the CDC anticipates what flu strains they think will be circulating in the population. Some years they do better than others. So yes, the formulation this year is, is absolutely available on the CDC website, which, which strains they anticipate, both in influenza A, influenza B. So, so the, the components for the, the current flu vaccine are absolutely published on the CDC website already.
I apologize, Commissioner, I thought you meant COVID, and I was like, okay, they don't have COVID out.
Well, and, and so that's what I was going to end with. The last point I have is, is just to put out information, again, forward-leaning, looking at the future, and some of the plans that we have internally in, in Emergency Management, whether or not they would be leveraged, remains to be seen. But there's, you know, 42 vaccines in development that we know about, that are being actively tracked by, by certain organizations that track vaccine development. So we have 42 different COVID-19 vaccines in some stage of development. Obviously, Operation Warp Speed is something that is coming out of, of the current administration in Washington, which is a way to fast-track vaccine development. Two of those Warp Speed programs are in Phase III clinical trials currently. The, the idea behind Warp Speed, and I, I apologize if I get my numbers wrong, I think I've got them, is 300 million doses available in January 2021. So it'll be interesting to see what happens with, with the fast-tracking of a COVID-19 vaccine. The question that absolutely begs to be answered is, is long-term risk. So if you rush a vaccine to market and you give hundreds of millions of doses within months, obviously, we just don't have long-term data on risk. You know, what are the long-term safety concerns? Most vaccines, when they come to market, you're, you're talking years of, of study and years of data, and we don't expect to see that with the, with the first couple rounds of, of COVID vaccines that hit the market. So again, like, flu season will be interesting. It'll be really interesting when these, when these COVID-19 vaccines start to hit the market as to mandates, who will be told to get them, who will elect to get them, who will choose to get them. It'll be, it'll be an interesting, interesting time to see what happens with these fast-track vaccines. But they're talking about availability, the, the, those more optimistic are saying by, by, before the end of the year, and then there's a lot of, of voices out there that would expect to see it in the beginning of 2021. So that's all I have. Unless there's other questions?
Thanks, Dustin.
Thank you, Dustin.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I don't know if all the parties are, are here, but would you entertain a motion to go to executive session for the purpose of the lacrosse facility?
Would that be okay? Be okay, board? Moved by Drews to go into executive session, second by DeSanto. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Moved to come out of executive session?
Moved.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item number 17, those items from Highway.
Good morning, Commissioner, again, Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway. Get logged in here. All right, so first up here is road salt purchase. This is to purchase off the state bid, state bid price for this year. Came in at $83.07 per ton. Last year was $79.24 a ton. Last year was a, one of, I think it was the second snowiest year on record, snowiest season on record. We spent $110,386 on road salt last year, and so the increase over last year for this year's salt is about $3.83. We average about 1,000 tons per year, so this will be an increase in our budget, about $4,000, or an increase in, in those costs, I should say. So with that, I will stand for any questions.
Do you have a motion or discussion?
Move to approve.
Madam Chair.
Moved by DeSanto, second by Ross Connect. Commissioner Drews, please.
Joe, who hauls this? Do we haul or do they haul?
No, they haul it. That is a delivered price.
Okay. So.
Okay. Motion by second, or motion by DeSanto, second by Ross Connect. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item B, sir.
Item B is truck bid awarding. We advertised for bids and we only had one bidder turn in a bid. Same, same dealer as last year, Freightliner, at a price of $108,000 and six, eight, 108, $692. Last year's price was actually a little bit higher, so we, at last year's price was $109,983 for a total savings of about $1,201 this year. So since we purchased five trucks last year, we've actually had to take five trucks out of service due to cracks in their frames, and no longer being DOT compliant. Of the, the five new trucks that we bought last year, we've got four in service who are, are working. The, the fifth one is about halfway done, so by the time we get this truck, we'll be able to get right into getting it built. I don't know if, I think a couple of commissioners have been out to see what we do with those. It's pretty, pretty awesome to see the transformation from a bare truck to, to what they, they become, they're, they're multi-use trucks. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Madam Chair.
Or motion or a second, or motion or a discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
So Joe, I have been out there, I have seen what you've done, but I've never asked the question as to, I know that we provide the, the manpower, but we certainly have to buy some materials for strengthening those trucks and so forth. What do you estimate the cost to ready one of those trucks?
So to, so to buy the wing, the, the sander, or the hydraulics, the, the Force America, all the, the snowplow stuff, we estimated about $180,000, $190,000 total to put, put one of those trucks together.
Okay. Thank you.
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved by LaCroy, second by Drews. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Number 18, HR Generalist Sandy Sortland, please.
Good morning, Commissioners, Sandy Sortland, HR Generalist for Pennington County. We have some new position titles and ratings for five of our different departments, so if you want to look at 18A for Health and Human Services, we're going to be creating a position now, a grade 18. This will be an Economic and Medical Assistance Supervisor. It will be a grade 18 with a base of 2477 per hour. After January 1, this will be graded at a C-41 through the Gallagher DVM rating. We're seeking approval to add the position title now, and then at January 1, 2021, move it to a C-41.
Thank you. Questions?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy, please.
As I was going through this, Sandy, I, I mean, this is a great process, and I think I knew when we, when we were doing this trade-over that a lot of the departments are reevaluating and go, rego, and doing their job descriptions, which is a very good thing, because now they're finding out a lot of what, and details in the job, and, and that's why I, I believe that we have all these coming forward is because they've had to take, sit back and take the time and go through the job descriptions and figure out what they are, what they're really doing, and I think we're getting upgraded.
Very much so. John and I have been very impressed with the departments going to their employees and saying, let's make sure that we've got our job descriptions correct, going through the process and rewriting them, and really making sure that everything that we're doing right now really does represent the work that we're doing for the public.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
The C-41, 2730, 27348? Is that a mid-range or is that the low end of the seven step?
That's the low end, that's the beginning step for C-41.
The next year, they just move up to the, the, the next level?
Yes, that would be the next step.
Yep.
Move for approval.
Moved by LaCroy.
Thank you.
Second.
Second by Drews. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item B, ma'am.
Okay, 18B is basically a restructure of the IT department with new job descriptions to better reflect their workflow, as well as setting up direct career paths for their employees. There is job descriptions and a new work chart included in your packet that kind of shows what the new structure for the department will be. The desktop positions will move into the network and system positions, and then the software developer positions will be completely separate. There's also another page that shows what the new titles will be, what their prior rating was, and then what their new ratings will be, and these are all effective January 1 of 2021.
Thank you. What I like is that you guys put the prior rating in the assigned, and also for the public, when they look at that, they understand that pretty much 70, 80% of those job titles that were changed, not really changed, they're the same. So that helps us too, and it, for me, it helps me to make sure our budget is staying intact as well, and we're well on our way moving forward and not changing that by hu- huge amount by the end. But some of these ratings and some of these positions, it's pretty awesome to see that we're actually upgrading each department in a way that you actually know your job description. Instead of Gary's one, I'm two, and he's three, or Ross Connect is three, makes a difference if you actually know your position, and, and there's area in a lot of departments now where they can move up.
Yes.
And get excited about their job, that there's something to go to and get more education. Education, for me, on anything is pretty awesome, so that's, that's something new as well. So we've, we've made a good change with your department.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
One thing that would help just visualize is Brittany with the planning and zoning, she put together a flow chart, so it shows the director, and then the position below that, and then how that flows out, so you can, you can see that you, you got a planner, and then they have a chance to move up to a higher B level, and so it's just a visual aid, but it, it helps interpret some of this.
Yes, it does.
All right. Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
I agree with, with Ron and Lori with the, with the career path for your people. I think they all, they choose to, they, they know what they need to do and so forth, and I think you guys are doing a good job, but I think that's another repercussion of this change around that's happening is it's, we're looking at things different, so I think it's a good move. And I like the flow cha, or structural chart, too. I, it's just, it's just a great tool for, for commissioners and other people to be able to look at, to see who's doing what, where, and how simple it for us to do it, so.
We've gotten flow charts from several of the departments that are going through this restructuring process, and we're hoping that we can get those all put into one place, like on our Internet page and the HR, so we can all see how the different departments flow. It's one of the things we hope we can start taking on after our admin person starts next week.
Because you know, I, I like that, because that's one of the deals with the, somebody looks on their webpage or goes to that department. Because you know, I, I like that, because that's one of the deals with the, somebody looks on their webpage or goes to that department, they know who to contact. On back of my cards, I, I give the people, all the directors' phone numbers. No, I don't.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
I'd ask, like, just ask Lori a question relative. If the commission adopts this, uh, are you prepared to start moving forward on the restructuring immediately?
Um, and on January first of twenty twenty-one.
Okay, you wait until then.
For this to be in effect, yes.
Okay, thank you.
We have a motion. Motion by LaCroy?
Second.
Second by Drews. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item C, please.
Item C is a position that was actually reviewed by Gallagher for the Juvenile Services Center. Basically, this position is taking someone who is currently in a staff assistant three position and creating a new title called Juvenile Corrections Case Manager. This is a current position, this is just a title change. We just need your approval to be able to make that change in the job listing.
Do you have a motion or discussion?
Move for approval.
Moved by LaCroy, second by Drews, discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item D, please.
Eighteen D is again with the Sheriff's Office. This is actually going to be across all of their divisions. We will be moving staff assistant one, two, and three positions under the current structure to a regu- records specialist one and record specialist two. Um, again, this is across all Sheriff's Office divisions. These will all be effective January one of twenty twenty-one. You can see the record specialist is an A thirteen, and the record specialist two will be a B twenty-one, and those are the base rates. Again, this is basically a title change with new job descriptions. I want to commend the SO on their job descriptions, these were excellent.
Okay, thank you. Um, there's been a motion by DeSac- DeSanto and who's the second?
Aye.
Drews? Motion by DeSanto, second by Drews. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Finally, item eighteen E. These are new position titles, um, for all existing employees. The listed positions are forensic computer analyst, work program coordinator, pre-trial release coordinator, and a jail release coordinator. Again, these are all with the Sheriff's Office and law enforcement. Um, these were not a part of the original, or they're not a current position listings, these will be new ones. Um, these were reviewed by Gallagher. Again, these will be effective January one.
Move for approval.
Moved by DeSanto, second by, sorry, Drews? You two are starting to sound the same. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we will have a motion to go, any board of adjustment, please?
So moved.
Moved by DeSanto, second by Drews. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Jason, please.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Jason Thedison County Planner. I'll get my screen to come up here. Agenda item A is subdivision regulations variance twenty dash zero two. The applicant is H and H Land Company Number Two LLC. The agent is Brian Hammerbeck. Surveyor is DC Scott Surveyors. The applicant's agent, Brian Hammerbeck, is in the process of subdividing one existing lot into two lots. This preliminary plat is agenda item E on this meeting today. Uh, the applicant, Mr. Hammerbeck, has submitted subdivision regulations variance to request to waive the following two requirements. Number one, any additional improvements to Derby Lane, and number two, percolation tests and soil profile whole information. Pennington County subdivision regulations require that the Board of Commissioners shall review the following criteria when considering subdivision regulations variance request. Those are on the screen for your reference. I'll read staff's responses, starting with number one. Creating proposed tract one of Computer Edition will increase traffic, traffic density on Derby Lane. The applicant has stated the use of the proposed lot will be for agricultural purposes only and will not result in any increased traffic on Derby Lane. Therefore, this request should not be detrimental to the public health, safety, or general welfare or interest to other adjoining properties. However, if the lot is ever subdivided, rezoned, or developed for a use other than agricultural, these, these criteria could be negatively affected. Number two, there appears to be no particular physical surroundings, shape, or topographic conditions that would cause undue hardship to the owner. Strict application of the zoning ordinance, or of this ordinance would require the applicant to improve Derby Lane to ordinance fourteen standards and submit percolation tests and soil profile whole information. Number three, granting this variance should not cause any increase to in public cost. And lastly, number four, future land use of the proposed tract is identified as low-density residential district. Granting this variance will not place the subdivision in non-conformance with Pennington County zoning ordinance or Pennington County Comprehensive Plan. However, the lot, if the lot is ever subdivided, rezoned, or developed for a use other than agricultural, it could create non-conformance with county ordinances.
Got a question, Jason. Um, why do we have this in board of adjustment? Don't we do this as variances in, in other subdivision regs? Why is it in a board of adjustment?
No, subdivision regulations variances are heard by the board of adjustment, ma'am.
Right.
Right, we used to do them together with the plats.
Right.
But, uh, it was determined that they needed their own separate hearing under the board of adjustment.
I, yeah, you, you guys changed that up.
Right.
Do they do that through the city or anywhere else? What, why do we end up doing that, do you know?
Uh, that was just, uh, I think it was determined by the State's Attorney's Office that they should be he- heard separately from the plat.
But they had to go in board of adjustment where you need, um, four votes in order to pass something?
That's correct. Yeah, I'm not sure what the city does. Uh, I'd have to check into that for you.
Brittany, am, am I wrong? I'm not trying to bring this up now, but it, I, it just hit me that I, I don't remember us having a, it, it puts a pretty big thing when you need to, when you're trying to pass these, trying to get four votes instead of majority vote of three out of five.
Sure, uh, good morning, Brittany Malater, Planning Director. Um, this was, uh, due to the direction of the State's Attorney's Office. They did render an AG opinion on it, whether these, um, subdivision ordinances would fall under, or variances to the subregs would be something that would fall under the variance, which would be a board of adjustment. And the, um, AG's office opinion did come back and say that it was a variance procedure, um, under the board of adjustment. Because prior to that, we used to do it as a normal, going through the planning commission and board of commissioners, and it was, um, not through that. Um, but in some further research by the State's Attorney's Office, um, that they determined that we would do these through the board of adjustment.
I don't remember them doing this anywhere else, at least in through the city. I mean, it goes with the plat, you're needing four votes. You, it could end up i- in reality shutting down people pretty quick if you needed, um, four votes. So I guess that's, a- and it's for, for percolation tests, it's for a, a waiver of a road. I mean, I could see if it was gonna do something more, I don't know, strict or something, where it was like, like we do for board of adjustment for, um, vacation home rentals or something, that, that's pretty specific, meaning it should be maintained a little bit different, but these are, these are variance regs to people building stuff, and w- why don't we do it with all of it, if we're gonna do it that way?
What do you mean with all of it? Any variance?
When we do, when we do plating or setbacks or anything else.
That's correct. So any variance to any of our ordinances, it has to go through the board of adjustment. So if you are varying from any of the standards that are set forth under our zoning ordinance or the subdivision regulations, they require a hearing in front of the board of adjustment.
Um, now on?
From now on. That is our State's Attorney's opinion, and that was the direction that we were given by the State's Attorney's Office.
Well.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Drews.
Um, I, I do agree, I think this is, uh, very restrictive. Um, I'd like to have further conversation with the State's Attorney's Office.
Me too.
Following this relative to moving forward with these.
I agree, and I'm sorry, Brett brought this up now, but it just hit me how strict it's getting, to the point where we're, we're trying to encourage development. But it, it's not like we all don't want to encourage development today, but what about the next board or the next board?
Another step that really shouldn't, it's unnecessary.
Well, it's a, and it's a stricter, stricter step to try to get through the process, so, um, you're right. Commissioner Drews, um, and I'm sorry I brought it up now, it just hit me now, so, um, I'll visit and, and maybe other commissioners, we can visit and find a better solution, so. Sorry, Jason.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
Are you finished, Jason?
No, sir.
Okay, sorry, Jason.
I'll wait.
Keep going, Jason. Sorry, sir.
All right, so as a property sits today, it's own general agriculture district consisting of ninety point four one acres. There is special flood hazard area on the property, and it takes access off of Saint Germain Road. Contains a pole barn, onsite wastewater treatment system, a single-family residence, as well as a detached garage. The proposed lot, tract one of South Computer Edition, will continue to be zone general agriculture district, uh, consisting of forty acres, special flood hazard area on the property, vacant of structures, and will take access off of Derby Lane. Uh, the request was sent out for interdepartmental review, and we did requi- uh, did receive a comment from County Highway stating that an approach permit will be needed to be obtained, or for tract one. If the parcel stays zone general agriculture district, the Highway Department would not oppose waiving the requirements of improving ordn- improving ordinance fourteen Pennington County design standards. If zoning status changes or further subdivision of the parcel occurs, the Highway Department would require the Derby Lane being improved to be in compliance with ordinance fourteen. Uh, staff's analysis of the request, on July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty, the planning commission approved preliminary plat twenty dash eighteen to create tract one of South Computer Edition. This preliminary plat will be heard as agenda item E today. Granting this variance will satisfy condition number three, that preliminary plat, again, with this request, the applicant is requesting to waive the following plating requirements, that any additional improvements be made to Derby Lane, as well as percolation tests and soil, soil profile whole information. Staff does not support this subdivision regulations variance request, as there will be an increase in lot density, and Derby Lane should be improved to ordinance fourteen standards. However, if the board of adjustment chooses to approve subdivision regulations variance twenty dash zero two, staff recommends two conditions be included.
Thank you, Jason, and, um, is the applicant here? I just have a question, if that's okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that you, Brian?
Yeah, Pat's gonna speak for H and H Land Company.
Okay, so Pat, um, at this point, are you going, you're selling this property, and, and is the guy going to make a subdivision, or he just wants to add it, add it to this general egg?
He just wants to add it to general egg. It's gonna be a buffer, his residence is on the other side.
Okay.
To the west.
How many acres does he have, Pat?
I'm gonna say I think it's fifteen or twenty-three, I've kind of forgotten.
Okay.
And this is just a buffer, because we have some interest in doing some things with the other land, so. He said he'd like to have a buffer, and that's why he's buying forty acres. He has no plans to subdivide the land or use it for a residence at this time.
Okay, and then when you decide to do your development on the outlining areas, then the road should be improved and all those things should be done.
When we do the subdivision on the outlying area, we will be adjoining, uh, the road that is to the east, not to the west. And that road is already built to county standards. That, that road is called, uh, Germain.
Saint Germain.
Saint Germain, forgive me, saint. And, uh, so that we would be developing off of Saint Germain, but that's for the future. Specifically to this plan, his only access is off of Derby Lane.
And how many?
Derby Lane is not on the county road maintenance, and he maintains, along with one neighbor, Derby Lane. And it's one of the nicer maintained roads in the county.
I just wanted to ask, um, how many people access or use that road for their property?
Two.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yeah, right, thank you.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I'm gonna move for approval with two seconds.
Moved by LaCroy, second by, uh, DeSanto. Any other discussion? Jason, Yevan? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next is, uh, item B, please. Miss Brittany.
Okay, item B is variance VA twenty dash zero eight to reduce the side yard setback from twenty-five feet to nineteen feet to construct a greenhouse in a limited agriculture district. As the property stands today, it does contain a single-family residence and an onsite wastewater treatment system. There is no special flood hazard area on this property. There, the access up to this property is off of two hundred and thirty-seventh street, and it is in the Rescue Ranch Road District. Criteria for a variance, the zoning ordinance requires the board of adjustment to determine that four specific criteria are meant. For this request, the subject property does have canyons and significant topographical changes. The buildable area on this lot appears to be limited. This variance would not grant you use, which is otherwise excluded from the property zoned as limited agriculture district. Strict application of the zoning ordinance would require the greenhouse to meet the mini- minimum side yard setback of twenty-five feet. And granting this setback variance does not appear to be contrary to the public interest, as staff has not received any calls or letters of concern. If approved, VA twenty dash zero six would allow a nineteen-foot setback and move a twenty-five-foot setback in the limited agriculture district. This was routed through the interdepartmental review process. County Highway did comment that it is opposed to any setback variances, however, it would make exception for these requests, because it should not impact drainage, and is located in the Rescue Ranch Road District. Um, staff did perform a site visit to this property and did verify, um, to the rear of the property, um, there is steep, uh, canyons and significant, um, topographical changes. So if the board of adjustment does approve variance VA twenty dash zero eight, staff recommends two conditions.
Thank you.
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved by DeSanto, second by Ross Connect. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
And item C is a second reading of ordinance amendment OA twenty dash zero six. Oops, sorry, you guys.
This is, uh, I was gonna say. We need to close.
Move to close, uh, the board of adjustment.
Second.
Moved by LaCroy, second by Drews. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. I thought I missed one or something, Brittany, thank you. Item C, regular agenda items?
Uh, item C is a second reading of ordinance amendment OA twenty dash zero six, Pennington County, to amend section five fourteen violations and penalties. To amend and supersede the existing section five fourteen, uh, the planning commission recommended approval of ordinance OA twenty dash zero six, and the board of commissioners approved the first reading of this ordinance amendment on August fourth, two thousand twenty, with two changes.
Motion or discussion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Drews?
Second.
Second by Ross Connect, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. Item D, please. Cody.
Uh, good morning, Cody Sac, environmental planner. Item D is road naming request, uh, for Kona Court. The proposed road name would be a twenty-six foot wide interior access road. Uh, to be dedicated as an access easement and is approximately point two five miles east of the intersection at Country Road and one forty-third Avenue. Um, the applicant's Randy Doughty. Um, the applicant and the property have received a conditional use permit to allow a rental home park on the subject property. Uh, this road would provide access to, uh, the mobile home par- park, and it is part of the condition that they get the road naming. Um, it was routed, there was no comments, and the name Kona Court has been approved by emergency services.
Thank you. Do you have a motion or discussion?
Move to approve.
Moved by Ross Connect?
Second.
Second by Drews. Um, one comment, it's nice to see on your review, um, that, uh, the GIS and, and nine-one-one approve of this. Um, because a lot of times they have fi- problems finding the addresses, and they're usually the biggest complainer of changing, uh, names or addresses, so that's nice to have that on there, Cody, thank you. There has been a motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Ross Connect, in. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Kara, you can stop me if you don't get somebody's name.
I will, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kara. Item E, please, Jason.
Morning again, com- Commissioners, Jason Thedison County Planner. Agenda item E is a follow-up to agenda item A. Preliminary plat twenty dash eighteen to create tract one of South Computer Edition. Uh, the applicant's agent, Brian Hammer- Hammerbeck, has applied for this, uh, preliminary plat. Existing conditions, uh, currently zone general agriculture district consisting of ninety point four one acres. There is special flood hazard area on the property, takes access, access off of Saint Germain Road, contains a pole barn, a single-family residence, as well as a detached garage. The proposed lot will be tract one of South Computer Edition, can you, continue to be zone general agriculture district consisting of forty acres. Special flood hazard area on the property, vacant of any structures, and access will be taken off of Derby Lane. The request was sent out for interdepartmental review. County Highway, the floodplain manager, register of deeds, all had comments that are included as conditions of approval. Staff's analysis of the request, the creation of this lot will increase density on Derby Lane, and the applicant will be required, required to improve Derby Lane. Commissioners have approved, uh, the subdivision regulations variance twenty dash zero two as, as agenda item A in today's meeting. This approval sa- This approval satisfies a condition of approval for this request. The proposed lot does not appear to reduce the size of the existing lot below minimum lot size requirements for a general agriculture district. Staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request, as it appears to be in harmony with existing lots and current land use in the area, and staff recommends approval of preliminary plat twenty dash eighteen.
Move to approve.
Second. Moved by Ross Connect, second by LaCroy. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item F, please. Hi, how are you?
Good morning.
And your name?
Stephanie Johnson, Planner One.
Ms. Stephanie? And item F, honey?
All right. So item F is Layout Plan LPL twenty nineteen for Ray and Elizabeth Strand. On July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty, the applicant supplied for a layout plat to consolidate two existing lots into one lot. As it sits today, both lots are zoned plan unit development. Lot five R contains twenty-six point five-one acres. And lot four RA contains sixteen point seventy-seven. There's no special flood hazard. Lot five R contains two barns, a carport, and a single-family residence with attached garage. And lot four RA is currently vacant. There is a section line that runs through both properties that was vacated in nineteen eighty-four. The proposed lot is forty-three point two-eight acres. Staff found no significant issues with applicant's request, and staff does recommend approval of Layout Plan twenty nineteen.
Thank you, Ms. Stephanie. Motion or?
Just one question.
Commissioner Ross.
I just wondered what the motivation is. I'm assuming they could go up to the egg status, once they go over the forty acres?
Right. Um, I don't exactly know what their intention is.
Anyhow.
Move for approval.
Moved by LaCroy. Second by Ross Connect. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item G, please. Christina. Good morning, Christina.
Good morning, Commissioners. Christina Proledi, County Planner. I'll bring up my slide real quick. All right. Item G is Layout Plan twenty dash zero two. On July second, two thousand and twenty, the applicant Link SD Ranchers LLC had requested to create proposed tract A with approximately twelve point five-four acres, tract B with approximately thirty-eight point six-five acres, tract C with approximately eleven point two-four acres, and then tract D with approximately thirty-seven point four-four acres. In a little more detail, each proposed tract is currently zoned General Agriculture District. Upon subdividing these, the applicant, excuse me, will need to provide either a rezone and comprehensive plan amendment or a lot size variant request, variance request. All proposed tracks are able to gain access from the Duhamel Flat Road. A layout plan is an informal preliminary review of the proposed subdivision for just general scoping conditions. The subject properties, currently, the special flood hazard area has not been studied, so there's no data for that. This has been routed through interdepartmental review process, and there are no other items of concern for these properties. Staff does recommend approval with conditions.
Thank you. Can you tell me where Duhamel Flat is?
Yes.
Approximately in?
Excuse me.
Antioch County?
No, I'm actually gonna bring up Rapid Math real quick.
Thank you.
Once I find it. Oh, it was already up. Sorry, I'm gonna go over here. Okay, this is the subject property highlighted. Let me turn on some aerial and zoom out for you.
Okay.
Sorry, it has too much.
Okay. East of town, west of town, north of the hill city, that kind of area?
Sorry. Yeah, it's way east up here.
East is way east, over by.
Kind of where I'm pointing with my mouse here.
So you're, wow, okay. Thank you. I just wanted the general location of where this.
Pretty far.
I'm sure. Mr. Drews?
So I noticed in the narrative, there's a, some are referred to as tracks and some are referred to as lots on the map. It shows them all as tracks. Is there a definitive difference between tract and lot?
From my understanding, I believe that if people plot their property as a tract, it can still be zoned as general agriculture. And I think lots.
More layout plots?
Are, I'm not sure if it can't be, but I know, from what I know, is tracks are generally associated with general agriculture.
Okay, so the narrative should be changed to calling them all tracks rather than?
It should be tracked. If it says a lot, that was probably my typo. I'm sorry. Yeah. They proposed them as tracks.
Kale, do you know if track or lot, since you do a lot of that engineering stuff means?
I believe that.
Figured if anybody would know, he's been around for a while.
I believe the regular shaped configurations are supposed to be described as tracks.
Okay.
Lots, which are more rectangular in shape. So traditionally, when we get drainage structures that follow really regular boundaries, we describe them as tracks. That's the, I don't know about any of the zoning.
Okay.
Thank you. Get your question answered?
Yep.
Commissioner Drews? Okay. Do we have a motion or more discussion?
Move to approve.
Moved by Ross Connect?
Second.
Second by Drews. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next is Plan Unit Development Review. Gordon Howie. Item H, please.
Good morning, Commissioners again. Plan Unit Development Review PU zero five eighteen for Gordon Howie to review an existing plan unit development. This item was continued from the August fourth, two thousand and twenty Board of Commissioners meeting. This Plan Unit Development Review was brought in from the Planning Commission and Board of Commissioners due to a complaint from the Cedar Gulch Number Two Water District because they had concern with the number of water taps and the water availability in this area. Planning Commission did approve the review of this Plan Unit Development with conditions. So I didn't hear any questions. This one also goes along with item I.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
Was this continued from?
Yes. Yes.
And we were waiting for some clarification.
That's what's on your?
We received from.
Did you get this?
Okay.
This paper?
Oh. Yes.
Oh, from the state's attorneys.
There's some questions, one, two, and three, and then brief answers below it.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
Brittany, the process that this reads through is there's three different phases of, this is just like the first phase. Can you explain that to me for the platting?
So this is actually the Plan Unit Development Review. So this is the actual zoning district. Plan unit developments are created as its own zoning district with its own rules and regulations. This was brought up for review due to the request of the Cedar Gulch Number Two Water and Sanitary District. They had concerns with water availability in that area and being able to provide water to the subdivision. So they wanted to bring that forward in front of the Planning Commission and the Board to make you guys aware of the issues and the concerns that that district has. So this is what the actual zoning underlying. The layout plat is the next one, which is the three, kind of the three processes or three steps for the platting process.
Okay. So the Planning Commission did due diligence in going through this. So if we approve this, I mean, I'm just like everybody else with that second egress. I mean, I'm adamantly against that. But if we were to prove, what the Planning Commission approved, they still have, they ain't gonna be able to go out there and build without getting the second access. Am I correct?
That would be that conditions one has to do with either getting a subdivision regulation variance for that second means of vehicular ingress and egress. And number two is that they would have to show that they could provide a water supply to other lots in that area.
So by approving this, we're not proving that they can go out and start building. There's still other processes. It's built into this and so?
Correct.
And I think I shared that concern from our last meeting. That's why I've been wanting to hold on. Go.
So?
I'd move for approval. I can't.
So bottom line is layout plat and preliminary plat are approved by the Planning Department, right? Okay, at the first two steps, the subdivider meets with the Planning Department. The Planning Department reviews the plan and then makes a recommendation, which sometimes includes conditions that must be completed before approval of the plat to ensure compliance with state law ordinance and subdivision regs.
So to answer your question, Colin McNeese with the State's Attorney's Office. There's a three-step process like Commissioner LaCroy said. Right now, we're in the first one, which is the layout plat or layout plan, excuse me. And that one just requires certain information to be provided by the subdivider to the planning staff and then to the Planning Commission for them to review. They review it, then they come up with conditions, just as a courtesy, to fulfill the goal of the subdivision regulations. Because we want to give everybody notice about what the Planning Department thinks needs to be done to ensure the general health, safety, and welfare of the people of Pennington County. The preliminary plat would have to have the subdivider come in, provide more information. It's more costly, and they would have to, at that point, planning staff would look to ensure that the state law ordinances and the subdivision regulations have been met. So there might be more requirements or conditions or stipulations or whatever you want to call them at the preliminary plat and also potentially at the final plat.
So all three of these come through us?
Yes, I believe so, because.
Not the final plat?
No.
So the layout plan and the preliminary plan are done in front of the Planning Commission and the Board of Commissioners, and you guys set the criteria. If all the criteria is met, then the planning director can sign the final plat and it can be filed.
That's what I wanted Commissioner LaCroy and the Commission to understand. That the three-step process is not through the three-step process of us. So the first and second process, they need to meet that. Basically, what we say, they need to meet that, and if they can't meet that, there is no reason to approve a final plat because they can't meet the stipulations. The other thing is, is how did the Planning Commission, or did they not put that forward about the water and the second egress? How did they address that, Brittany?
They did address it as a condition that they would have to get a subdivision regulation variance. That is an option in every plat, so there is a certain criteria in the subdivision regulations. They can come to this board and ask for a subdivision regulations variance on any of the criteria that's in our subdivision regulations. Our subdivision regulations cover everything from roads to water systems to fire protection, percolation profile, topography. So there's a laundry list of things that are required under the subdivision regulations.
So bottom line is, we could approve this today, and they'd have to come back with those variances before they build or do anything else.
Correct.
And then I just wanted to point out, in the three-step process for it to, for the final plat to go to Brittany as the planning director, this board has to have an ordinance that allows that. I wasn't able to find that, but I just might have missed it. So if there's no ordinance granting Brittany the authority to do that, then it would in fact come before this board for a final plat, and you would have to by resolution.
Are we, are you following, when you're changing Board of Adjustment of this, are you following city standards or are you following state standards?
Statute.
So why all of a sudden are we changing all these things based on? What you're doing is, and I understand some of it, but you're putting people through a stricter process. When we don't have inspectors, we don't have a lot of the rules and regulations that a lot of the cities have. So I'm trying to figure out why, and not that you're doing a bad thing. I mean, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out, if you're trying to comply with all these, we don't have the standards in Pennington County and the means and ways, I should say, to do what you're saying on some of this stuff. So if we change some of our process, I think it might make sense. But at this point, we, you're adding a lot of process to something we don't really have, most of the things that other cities have in the county.
Commissioner Hadcock, I understand what you're saying, and first off, I'm gonna address the process.
Yes, sir.
The statute requires this board to approve any final plat by resolution, unless this board by ordinance says, Brittany, you can do this, the planning director. I wasn't able to find that statute, but it might exist. So the process might not change. I just wasn't able to find the ordinance that gave her the authority to do that. As far as the the processes, those have always been in our subdivision regulations since the last time they were amended, which I think was twenty-eleven.
Twenty thirteen, I think was the last one.
So we've always had the layout plat, we've always had the preliminary plat.
Right.
And then the final plat. And the burden has always been on the subdivider to provide that information, and then the planning staff to then go and investigate to see whether there's a second ingress egress, whether there's any issues with the road, whether there's any issues with fire mitigation, or any other of the subdivision regulations. So nothing has changed. It's just, I think, what's happened since they were amended is that everybody smushes them together. And that's not what this board needs to do to ensure, it's a legal term, smush. To ensure that you're following the law and you're following your own subdivision regulations.
So bottom line, also, another question is, so if they can't even meet the first and second, meaning layout and preliminary plat conditions, there wouldn't be any reason to start with a layout plan because they can't meet the conditions anyway to move further. Unless, at that time, they can, and they're, and maybe today they have something different, then they can provide the second access and they do have the water and means to provide water. Am I correct?
Well, with the layout plat, all you have to do, or all a subdivider has to do is provide that information. You as board could say, potentially, look at all of the conditions and based on the information that the subdivider provides to you, to the planning department, you could potentially deny it on those reasons. And if you were going to do it, you would need to make explicit findings of why.
Okay.
But that's really a better process for the preliminary plat, excuse me, because that is where the rubber meets the road. The conditions that planning department puts in the layout plan is just to give them notice and to fulfill our goal of the subdivision regulations to say, hey, this is what we think is coming up, and this is what we think you need to do. They don't have to do them there at the layout plat stage. It's just they have to provide all that information required. Staff makes their recommendations, then it goes through the Planning Commission. I think Commissioner Ross Connect was on there at the time, or sitting with the Planning Commission at the time, and then it comes up to you for the layout plat. And if they meet those requirements, there's nothing wrong with.
Approving it today.
Approving it today, because they would still have to come back later, and that doesn't bind you as a commission. You don't do anything wrong. You're following your subdivision regulations, which is in accord with state law.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
So basically, Colin, we can approve it today as a plat. But if they did not, what would be the point of doing that if they couldn't even move forward anyway if they're proving that today that they can't? I mean, I'm listening to what you're saying, but then you'd just be putting someone through something, thinking they're moving forward. But I understand where you're going.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner DeSanto.
Right now, we're voting on extending the Plan Unit Development. We're not even voting on the plat at this point in time, or the layout plat. That's the next item.
Correct.
So by extending the PUD, we would be saying that they did have enough water and a second access?
No. No, that's not what we're saying at all.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Ross.
I think part of this process is just to reduce the risk to the developer.
Meaning?
Meaning, I think you have, there's a number of steps before you get the final plat and you have to start somewhere. And I think this is the first step, just testing the waters, taking baby steps.
Madam Chair.
I agree with Commissioner Roskinak. It's, it's literally the first step. It's, they're testing the water to see what it is because the preliminary plat, if I'm correct, costs more money. It's more steps, it's more investment. And this is just the first step in that process where they put the conditions and like we said earlier, that the conditions might change later upon further investigation or with the more information that they have to provide.
Thank you.
I refer to it as checking the, checking our temperature.
I got you, Billy. Okay, Commissioner LaCroy, please.
Move for approval with the ten conditions.
Second.
Move with LaCroy, second by DeSanto. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. Item aye.
So item aye is the layout plan, LPL 20-14, to create Lot 2 of Block 2 and Lot 1 and Lot 2 of Block 3 and Lot 7 through Lot 10 of Block 3 of Cedar Gulch Number 2 subdivision. The planning commission did approve this and this was continued from the August 4, 2020 Board of Commissioners meeting.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
Move for approval. Second.
Motion for, for approval by LaCroy, second by DeSanto, discussion?
Madam Chair. When the planning commission approved this, we, stipulation one, it says prior to any plating, the second means of ingress egress is engineered, that prior to the issuance of building permits, there's a lot of mechanisms that would have to be met. So there's a lot of safety nets for the county in here that will have to be met before, you know, your.
Madam Chair.
So are, have they been met, Brittany, for the second egress and the water?
No.
So we would be approving this today and they didn't have neither?
So with the layout plan, they only have to submit, submit certain information and they've done that. That's what Colin was speaking to at the preliminary plat. That is when they have some options to meeting that they could get a subdivision regulation variance, waiving those requirements. They can bond for those requirements. So there's some, some different things that they can do into the next step in that process. But a layout plan, as far as the criteria in our subdivision regulations and our ordinances for supplemental for the layout plan, they have met those requirements.
So basically, you guys have approved this up to the layout plat through the planning department and Planning Commission. Because it's still in layout plat, they haven't went through preliminary plat through planning commission yet either?
No.
Okay.
So the layout plan is usually a conceptual, like this is what we're proposing, this is what we'd like to do. And then the next step is either a minor or preliminary. In this case, it's a preliminary.
Thank you for clarifying. Commissioner LaCroy.
I, I think that's exact, thank you, Brittany, for clarifying that because that's what it is, is just to give them a guidance to where they need to go. One of the things that I liked, what you kind of slid in there is they could bond, put up a bond for the road or, you know, doing some other stuff. There's some options and I think, I think the, the goal of this commission, and I'm glad they're here today, is that we, we want the second access, we want the water there, and we're communicating that loud and clear, I think. Not only the planning commission, but with, with the stipulations.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
Just for a point of clarification, after reading the attorney, the state's attorney's recollection or, or recording of the 2005 meeting, I think that there needs to be some clarification in there actually about whether or not the meaning was specifically those two subdivisions and how many homes were in those two subdivisions? And whether or not it extends to all of the outlying areas around those two subdivisions as well as far as the home count is concerned because those two subdivisions do not have the, the 30 homes, even if we built three more homes, though it would not have 30 developed properties in those two subdivisions. So was the intention of that previous commission to restrict building in those two subdivisions based on homes built all over Bradsky Road? Or just in those two subdivisions? That's unclear to me right now.
Right. And that, that's true because the moratorium was for, remember, for 40 homes and maybe Brittany knows this. How many homes were in there before and how many? And that's true, how many of the subdivision one and two, how many homes were supposed to be built in the first place?
I think the subdivision was originally up to 150 homes, I think, was in this PUD. We did do, I have been working with the city, they are looking at some other subdivision to the north of Bradsky. We're in that same situation on a similar plat that they have. There are, I think, 71 actual address points along Bradsky Road right now. And there's 140 lots or parcels that could take access existing off of Bradsky right now that some of them are undeveloped at this time.
So the question is, on the 71 now, how many were there beforehand on this moratorium? Because they started putting, I was here when we put a moratorium on there. When, how many lots have been basically put out there before all these homes decided to be there? Were the homes for these subdivisions, was that all plotted before, before all the other homes were put in there? Does that make sense, Brittany?
And I would have to look back. There's the Holy Cow Ranch subdivision, there's this subdivision, and then there's one along Backcountry Trail. I know those are the three newest ones. I would have to look at the exact plating dates of those. But I know that off the top of my head, those are the three most recent subdivisions.
So then how did Mr. Howie end up doing or having, is it his lots that would, and his land back in the day, that would make that second access possible? Why was he put on notice that he had to do it instead of the other developers that put houses out there?
I do believe on the Holy Cow Ranch, that was also Mr. Howie. I am, I believe that the Backcountry Trail was Mr. Stromer.
Okay. And how come Mr. Stromer, wasn't it possible to put the second access where he was or why? Why, bottom line, why is it put on Mr. Howie?
Yeah, and I don't know the answer to that. I don't know if there was something with, because the second access that they did propose was from Backcountry Trail to Airport Road. And so there is a, like a two-track trail that goes there, like an emergency that was put there prior to that. And then when the Bradsky Road Bridge was kind of realigned, there was some ability to use that for contractors so they could still get heavy equipment and things across there because when that bridge, if you remember, they had to do that restriction on that bridge because it was in such poor shape that large vehicles and things, there was a weight limit put on it. So they had that access through, I think, from Backcountry Trail to Airport Road.
So, Mr. Howie, just a question for you, sir. If you have a, if I could ask you some questions. So when you put on your deed, as I recall listening to something with Shadrack and Commissioner DeSanto, if you recall, Commissioner DeSanto, you put on your deed, you were going to put the second access with your subdivision on the deed. And I don't know if the deed meant for 150 homes, 20 homes, 50 homes, I don't remember. Mr. DeSanto might want to clarify that, but did, I mean, why wasn't the second access put in and why did you have to put it in?
I think I'd like to defer to our engineer who could, who could give you information on what was originally approved and, and how that was intended to move forward.
Thank you. I appreciate that, sir.
Yeah, so it's Kale Magnino, Long Branch Civil Engineering. So when this thing started, maybe a point of clarification, Holy Cow Ranch does an access off of Bradsky Road. I think that was stated that Mr. Howie had two subdivisions off of Bradsky, but Holy Cow Ranch does not. When this subdivision first came forward, everything within the highlighted perimeter was set for development and it was at a level of about 110, I believe, residentials. That, you know, and it was kind of the first major development that was going to happen down on the south end of Bradsky. So when the PD first came forward, and I'm looking at it right now from January of '07, we went through a number of steps that were going to require different levels of access. And I think it's, you know, the second page on your, on your staff report, which talks about prior to issuance of the seventh building permit, the second means of ingress egress to be constructed to allow the construction vehicle access. And there, the, so the, the first step was it has to get designed. And that was designed by Mr. Sperlich back in like '06 and it came off of Airport Road. So that meant the, the initial requirement says prior to any plating, second means of ingress will be engineered. And then that second step is before the seventh building permit, it'll be dedicated so that the construction traffic can follow it. That, to my knowledge, did not happen. Of course, the 16 roughly units out here in the subdivision got planted. I don't believe they're all built on them, but they would, let's just say that there's probably approximately 16 building permits in this subdivision. And then the prior to the issuance of the 31st building permit, the second means will be actually built. So if there's 16 lots planted right now and potentially 16 houses, then the addition of, you know, even another four, seven more doesn't actually get to that. Put the original PD, doesn't get to that number. Of the, the 30, was it?
Thirty-one.
First building permit, yeah.
Do you know the history of it then with the 71? Now, because remember, we 40-united it and then said, I'm not always in favor of the 40-unit, depending on what the landscape and the area is around. I mean, can the people get out is bottom line. And don't get me wrong, I don't want 150 people going through a bridge at this point, but tell me, Kale, if you have 71 lots or 71 people there now and you want to make another subdivision.
Yeah, so the, you know, the, the backstory on how many units were there before Mr. Howie brought this subdivision to the table? I, I don't necessarily know. My former boss, Sperlich, was doing all those meetings at that point. I think a lot of those were already planted at that point and then this came in. And it seemed like an opportunity to get a second access by making it a party to his PD or requirement of his PD. So, yeah, do I know if there was 50 there before he started and it's continued to subdivide? I honestly don't know.
Madam Chair.
The, one more thing, if I could. So the follow-up is, if, if the county had somebody that said they were going to put a second access in because they were going to do some subdivision, then they started letting people build and keep building until they figured out later that that second access, it wasn't going to happen and wasn't going to be followed through. By that time, they probably had all those homes already built, thinking they were getting the second access at that point. And now we're back to where we were again. Like I said, the second access, unfortunately, when you guys build or when people build and they say they're putting a second access, it's almost like if you say you're going to build that much, many homes anymore, we should probably have them put a second access in or something so we don't get stuck later. If they decide not to build, they decide not to do something. Because then with that promise that you are doing that, we let other people in. So what's happened at this point is we have no second access. We have 71 homes at this point and now we want to add more. So tell me, tell me, Kale, what's, what's the best solution in something that when, at that point, if the county thinks there's going to be a second access, if other people think there's going to be a second access, they go build and they come back and say, oh, it didn't really work out, we didn't sell those lots and we can't do a second access now and we're not going to because it's not cost feasible. So Commissioner DeSanto.
Madam Chair, I think the key elements here as to who is responsible for a second access lies within whether or not the number of homes developed included all of Bradsky Road. According to the conversation that I read in the state's attorney's report, all they were referring to, referring to was those two developments, Cedar Gulch, Cedar Gulch 2, which have not come close to the 30 homes yet. They were not referring, they're never mentioned anywhere else in there, any other developments off of Bradsky Road. They're just referring to Cedar Gulch 1 and Cedar Gulch 2. And so I'm not going to speak for Mr. Howie, but I think the intent was that if he developed X number of homes, 30 homes, in those two subdivisions, then he would consider putting in that second access or he's relegated to put in those, that second access. However, he hasn't reached only half of that number at this point in time. And so I think we're, in a way, we're jumping the gun, but also there's another element that came into play back in 2005. That bridge was still in bad shape and wasn't adequate for Bradsky Road Bridge or Airport Road Bridge, was not in good shape. Now it's a brand-new bridge. We put in a brand-new bridge a couple of years ago when it got, so even the, what was being considered back in 2005 is in a way no longer relevant today because the situation with the bridges has changed completely. It's, it's not, it's not the same as it was back then. Both of those bridges have been replaced.
Well, the issue was the weight load, not the access on the bridge. So you could still access it back then. It was the weight load, which is a whole different thing when you're talking about the bridge works better now because it, it takes more people or it takes more weight, but it doesn't necessarily take more cars across faster.
Right.
So.
Even aside from that, the, the bottom line is, is that even if Gordon Howie was relegated to building a second access, then at this point in time, he hasn't met the number of houses that would require that to be done in the first place.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Howie, or sir.
Just, there's, there's been quite a bit of discussion about promises and requirements and all that. And there's a big difference between a promise and a requirement at a certain level. And if you look back as, as the engineer, Kale was, was telling you, there, there are two or three different levels where it kicks in a new requirement. And so prior to, I think, am I, where'd Kale go? Oh, prior to the 31st lot being planted or building being constructed, prior to that, or I'm sorry, when we reach that bar, then there's a requirement for a certain ingress and egress. And we just, we're not even there. So it's not that we didn't fulfill a promise, it's just that we haven't even got to that stage yet. And so I just wanted to clarify that. It isn't that we haven't done something we promised to do, it's that we have not reached the bar which requires us to do it yet.
Commissioner Haddcock.
Sir.
So where we're at now is the layout plat or plan, excuse me, keep conflating those two words. We're at the first step.
Yes, sir.
And the, what happened in the past with Mr. Howie was just provided for your information. It doesn't have to do with what is before you now or what would be before you later. That was just to give you some information about what was going on there historically. So whether he met those or didn't met those or those requirements have kicked in or they haven't kicked in doesn't matter now and it won't matter later. We have to follow the regulations now. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
First, I want to thank Kale for kind of reading that through there because when you start reading those stipulations, the engineering discussions, all those have been set forth and so we are where we are at the 16. And so it helped me great understanding from the Bradsky just, the bridge discussion, so. You know, and that was one of the reasons why I made the motion for approval is because I think, you know, there is requirements in there and they're going to have to look at those and, and still follow those ones. But thanks, Kale, for reading those through there. That kind of helped. The steps that he's been meeting them as he goes and kind of clarifies that. So I appreciate that.
Madam Chair.
Um, one more thing. So historically, what happens is in plating or building subdivisions, we're nice in our, we'll let you do 30. or building subdivisions, we're nice in our, we'll let you do thirty houses. We'll let you do twenty in phases with the stipulation that you still will do that second access. That second access has nothing to do a lot of times with twenty houses, thirty houses. It's phases because we're nice, because you really don't need it, because you haven't hit that forty unit rule. So, um, and Kale knows that because he he does it in the city all the time with people. Where we let them do it in phases to be nice to a developer because we don't wanna put the second access ahead of time because again, that forty unit rule doesn't come into play. So what happened is, Mr. Howie, is they let you, I'm pretty sure, put in a certain amount and say, well, if he doesn't get to that many, he's not gonna really affect anybody in that area at that time. But then what happened is you didn't follow through on your phases, which happens a lot in the city as well. And what happens is somebody else gets stuck with second access or putting in inlets or putting in sewer water, all kinds of different stuff in the other phases for that reason. So, um, we can say that he didn't make those requirements, but a lot of times, again, if you planned on a hundred fifty houses, we were nice enough probably back then to say you didn't need that many. What you need to do is you can put that twenty or thirty. Um, and then you could put that second access. Never happened. It was in two thousand and six. Two thousand and five is a little bit different than two thousand and six on on saying how many houses were there back then. Bottom line is, if you're doing developing and what's happening and it happened in the city, we have problems with oversizing and different things. We're letting people do subdivisions and not having the required requirements met because the subdivisions aren't getting made. It's not just Mr. Howie. It's people in general. So, um, we are out, they out plan to understand that and we can move forward with that, but um, with the understanding um, for me, Mr. Howie, um, when you're doing a development and you promise something and people are thinking you're moving forward within the future, um, makes huge difference whether you're doing thirty houses or fifty or a hundred and fifty. You are the developer that's making the difference out there for people thinking that you're gonna follow through with something and it didn't happen. So.
Madam Chair.
Just something to food for thought for later. Commissioner DeSanto.
I have a concern with this, um, with these recommendations that are in here as far as number one is concerned, only because of exactly what Colin pointed out that we're looking at the future. I don't want, uh, if uh, Mr. Howie comes back to build three more houses, he's still under that thirty house limit. In the future, it it, I mean, right now, there's no subdivision regulation that says that he's gotta put in a second egress or ingress. Applicable to the number of homes that are there at this point in time.
Commissioner DeSanto, with the new plan that he's requesting with this layout plan, the subdivision regulations require him to have adequate access with the second ingress egress. Um, I think it's five oh five or something like that and then table one. So what happened in the past, as far as that requirement or whether he's valid or not, is really irrelevant.
Okay, yeah. Okay, thank you. So, I'm good.
It's been a LaCroy's first, second by DeSanto. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item J. Thank you, Colin.
Item J is ordinance amendment OA twenty dash zero five to amend section five ten conditional use permits. To amend and supersede the existing section five ten conditional use permits. Uh, this was brought forward and changed um, due to the state legislature changing um, the appellate scheme for your uh, conditional use permits. Our current uh, conditional use permit section five ten allows a conditional use permit um, to go to the Board of Commissioners uh, upon appeal, and that's actually against statute um, right now with the new statutory changes, and I don't know remember when they changed in two thousand and seventeen or eighteen. Um, the approving body um, for a conditional use permit, the appeal is by writ to court. Um, so we had to change that appellate scheme actually in our ordinance. Um, so that has changed. That is one of the major changes in this section. In addition to and section D, the criteria for evaluating a conditional use permit application um, under statute, um, the reviewing board or the approving board has to have criteria under which they review a conditional use permit in order to make their decision. Um, so there's um, actually seven criteria now. Um, and then that appellate scheme is in there. There is a review uh, and a revocation of a conditional use permit that was also added in to that section.
Well, Ms. Brittany, do we have to change a mining permit or do we just have it so, because they can't appeal to us anymore?
No, they can. So if you have a conditional use permit that is very specific, so a uh, mining permit, so you in that, that is of it, it is identified as the planning commission being the recommending body. So in the instance of a mining permit, you guys are the deciding body. So the statute says the deciding um, body. So and under just a general conditional use permit, the deciding body is the planning commission, where under certain things like RV parks, uh, the Board of Commissioners is the deciding body. Mining permits, the Board of Commissioners is the deciding body. So that wouldn't change anything in our section three twenty.
Do we still, we, but we still do have them under conditional use permits?
They are, and we still can do that. This is just for the general conditional use permits that if you look in each zoning section, it'll say that these conditional use permits are allowed. Unless there's specific standards for them, um, you can make them more specific. Um, we have a few in our ordinances that are more specific, multifamily dwellings, RV parks, mobile home parks, uh, mining, if they are more specific.
We can't make it more specific so they come and can be recommended to us like we had before?
Correct. So, yeah, like I said, we just had an RV park that was in front of the planning commission. You know, those type of situations where you are going to have um, a want or a desire for the Board of Commissioners to review those, those are more specific and identified in our zoning ordinance. For just the general ones, like single wide mobile homes, um, you know, maybe something that's just, you know, living in an RV, you know, out on a piece of property in the hills, those types of things would never come to the Board of Commissioners. Um, so those are, because they're just more of a general conditional use.
Thank you for clarifying that, Ms. Brittany. Are there any questions? Questions or motion? Anybody have a motion?
I'd move approval of the uh, ordinance amendment.
Moved by Drews. Your second?
I'll second.
Second by DeSanto. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Move to, do we wanna go into an executive session now or do we wanna do other?
Okay. I just wanna do our committee reports and stuff. Let's just move forward on the committees.
Okay.
Mark, go ahead.
Um, I have no reports because Ron made my report for me. Um, but uh, there was a point that I wanted to make earlier and now it has uh, left me, so we'll go through everybody else and it might come back to me a little bit later. Oh, I thought I figured out what it was. Um, because of the way that our governor has handled South Dakota's COVID response, um, we have had a huge number of businesses from out of state seeking possibly moving here to to South Dakota. Um, I just want to speak out publicly that I I think that for development of South Dakota, for our um, future economic stability, um, this is, this has been a great thing for us, for Pennington County, for the whole state of South Dakota. And I just want to uh, give kudos to Governor Kristi Noem for sticking to her guns despite despite the amount of pressure that she's had um, from states all around. And uh, hopefully, God willing, we will continue on a downward trend. Um, we have huge gains because we haven't suffered economically like other states that uh, implemented much stricter regu- regulations on on their folks. Uh, article came out yesterday about the fact that our unemployment levels are very, very small compared to other states that enacted uh, implementation of of further restrictions because of COVID. And therefore, we aren't even requesting additional help from the federal government into our unemployment fund because we didn't have to use it. So, uh, again, I just, I just wanna um, give kudos to our governor for the decisions that she's made to keep South Dakota strong and vibrant and uh, um, and obviously safe as well. So, thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Commissioner Roskodick.
Well, I uh, again, did a building committee on Zoom. And it was a productive meeting. We discussed uh, how we wanted to proceed with the the cross street property, which we got some more information today. And uh, so that uh, we're moving along. Hopefully that'll that'll be done here in the next uh, month or so. Uh, last week I attended another Rapid City Metropolitan Planning Organization meeting. I'm on, and I'm on the phone on that one, so I don't know who I'm talking to. It gets pretty confusing. And uh, anyway, I know I'm talking to some of the folks down in Rapid City, but most of the people that were at that meeting, I'm guessing were on a computer, were on a phone. And the state DOT, they were on there and they're talking about where we are in certain uh, projects relative to highways and a lot of, a lot of stuff going on. The one that I find most interesting that might be applicable to us would be the, it's called the Sixth Street Corridor Plan. And that's, uh, they're doing a lot of, there was a lot of discussion on that. The other items are, you know, got any, anybody wanna anything you wanna discuss? Not really, but when we got to that Sixth Street, there was a lot of discussion on that. And I think it's gonna be pretty important to get that right and do it right the first time because that that involves uh, the infrastructure, you know, downtown District of Rapid City and how people are gonna get from how they, how they're gonna get from downtown Rapid City to the civic center. And there's different options going across Omaha Street, so uh, I'm gonna dive into that one just a little bit more. And then we were notified that September the first at three o'clock at the LaCroy Sea Room, uh, there's gonna be coffee with planners. So if you got some questions, you wanna sit down with some of these folks at the Rapid City Planning Department, this would be a good opportunity. The three things that they wanna go over more specifically would be urban chickens, long range community plans and updates on the new Monument Arena. That's September first, three o'clock. Room C at the LaCroy Room.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I was at another meeting, so I missed the MPO. Thank you for for going. They also talked about the transportation plan. That's pretty important. And hopefully something that would come out for Pennington County, but um, I don't think at this time we're going to be extending the bus service and stuff in Rapid City. That was something that we had talked about before. Um, Fire Service Board, where's all my papers? Okay, so, um, we did, at the Fire Service Board, they're not gonna have their annual conference or their en- annual um, awards banquet that they always have. They're trying to look into um, maybe doing that in January, so I suggested maybe that we have a barbecue or something from camaraderie for fire departments, so I'm gonna work with Gail and see if we can move forward on that. Um, let's see, there was some uh, Motorola, um, their programming, they did get their uh, their new, um, what do you call those? Mic, what do you call them?
Radios.
Radios. For some reason, I have a problem figuring out things they, but um, anyway, so everybody's moving forward on the different ones. There's Motorola and uh, different, three different types that they're trying to figure out, um, how they work and and who's programming those. Um, let's see, so radios banquet and, oh, something I forgot. They're looking in Custer about getting a fire coordinator. So, uh, kinda like drum. So that would be pretty cool. And that way we'd have some person to work with over there instead of like we have. We ended up doing a fire um, coordinator person because of all the different entities, the districts we have in Pennington County, and it causes chaos if you try to have uh, seventeen, twenty, whatever, people in those districts, um, someone being in charge.
Right.
It causes issues. So Custer was having the same issue and so we went over there and we were trying to help them sometimes. There was a lot of chaos. So doing something like a fire coordinator for fire administrator, whatever you wanna call them, um, for Custer would be pretty amazing for us as well because we'd have a contact and um, be able to basically play team like we do in Pennington County better. And it's worked really well for us. And if you ask all the departments for fire districts, it's been pretty amazing for Pennington County. The other thing is, is I'll be going to a class reducing the impact of substance and mental abuse. Um, I'll miss the, probably the first day. Um, I have to work that day, but the second I will be there. Um, and also doing um, some work on prosperity initiatives uh, with Barry Tice, just to look at some other areas that um, he's working in and how I can uh, kinda administer some, administer some, some of that uh, through some of the work I do um, with my businesses, so. Um, the other thing is, uh, we did have a meeting and that's why I miss Metropolitan Planning Organization as well is um, bringing the Missouri River Water West is a pretty big initiative. Uh, that's for Banner Associates. They had a meeting and I think that's something for uh, western South Dakota that is well needed. Um, the more people we have, um, the less water we have. Plus, what happens if you don't get and capture that water uh, from the Missouri River? At this time, somebody else will, and other states have been capturing um, different other entities waters and getting those permits. And for western South Dakota not to do that, for us to move forward on development for the future, as we know, um, a lot of people on the planning uh, commission and this commission has been asking, do we have enough water even to keep doing all these subdivisions? Uh, it's a big question. So, um, that's a huge issue. It's probably gonna be about one billion eight hundred and seventy million dollars. Um, that sounds like a crazy number in one sense, but how much development does that move forward on the I ninety corridor and the surrounding areas for western South Dakota? Um, you can, you can make that up through a lot of businesses and a lot of entities, um, having enough water and enough areas to develop at that time. And can you imagine what that would do to Pennington County? Be pretty amazing. So, anyway, they're in the works with that.
Good information there.
Gary?
Just a couple of things, a little follow up on Ron's uh, building committee report. Uh, one of the other items that we've been discussing in the building committee is that uh, part of the uh, the jail is um, thirty plus years old at this point in time. Uh, we do have some infrastructure needs there to uh, repair, maybe replace uh, sewer primarily. Uh, that's not something that I think we can do in-house as far as determining uh, how best to move forward and handle that. And so, um, I think we, we as a building committee are encouraging building and grounds to uh, to start looking for an outside source to come in and do a um, some sort of a study on how we, how we handle that in the future. Um, obviously, that's not a facility where you can take everybody and move them to a temporary location while you do those repairs. So there's a lot of, lot that has to go into uh, doing that. Uh, the other thing is the planning commission. Uh, we dealt with several of those issues already today that came up. Uh, the one that we didn't have to deal with today was uh, an issue that was continued. And this has to do with an RV park out across from Rockerville uh, proposed by uh, Mr. Eisenbrenner from the Wall area. And uh, there's still considerable information that needs to be uh, pulled forward in order to uh, be able to make any kind of decisions on that. Uh, one really involves water quantity and water quality. Uh, the state has been working through the water permit process. I think Mr. Eisenbrenner was under the impression that it had already been awarded to him, but that's not true. The uh, DNR is making, will make a uh, uh, they're looking at uh, conclusions uh, in facts on October seventh. They're not taking any further testimony. That is, that part of it's been completed, but uh, won't anticipate that final decision on that will be made until October seventh on that. And uh, obviously, that is something that will be coming back to the planning commission and and um, based on if that receives approval or that will come back to this commission too.
So Gary, are they at layout plan or are they on pre- So Gary, are they at layout plat or are they on preliminary plat on that?
You know, I can't answer that. I don't know if that's preliminary.
Or layout?
Right.
Madam Chair, question for Gary. Have, did they get approval by, I think one of our concerns when we were talking about this a year and a half ago was ingress and egress there. Did they get approval by the DOT to access Highway 16 for their?
What I understand is that they've given them approval, or maybe not given them approval, but told them that there'll need to be a different access, ingress, egress point on that.
Yeah.
And that location has been determined on that part of it. The rest of it, the safety factors of what needs to go into it, there's been no determination on that at this point in time. That was a concern that I expressed, that, you know, who pays for that from the safety standpoint?
Right.
And will the developer pay for that, or is that going to be put, you know, in the state does it? I mean, it's still the taxpayers that are ending up.
Like a deceleration, an acceleration lane?
Right.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Gary. Commissioner LaCroy?
I had YFS Program Committee Zoom meeting. Nothing really to report on that. They were talking about some of their programs. Also had a YFS Board meeting by Zoom, which was well-attended. And it was released that the new CEO taken over for YFS, and that is John Julius, who's taking over for, I should know her name. It just forgets me right now. But yeah, so he'll be taking over. He's going to do a slow start for YFS because of the retirement from the previous CEO.
Are we involved in YFS through the county, Lloyd?
No, I was on this before I was on the county. So, but it's still a community meeting. Also, I need to ask, who is the alternate for the local emergency committee? Because I have Black Hills Forest Field Trip tomorrow, all day from 8 till 5, and I have that meeting at 11:30 tomorrow. So I don't know who the alternate is.
I'm the alternate, I believe.
I'm not sure. I didn't bring that sheet with me.
Maybe we can email that alternate. Thank you, Ms. Holly.
You mean for the Forest Service?
No, I, yeah, I've got, I'm, I'm on that field trip for all day tomorrow with the Forest Service. But I'm also, I have local emergency planning committee meeting tomorrow at 11:30, so I ain't going to be able to make it. Yeah.
I'd say it's you, but I'm not sure, Madam Chair.
And I won't, I won't be able to make it because I work all day on Wednesdays.
I can make it to that meeting.
That'd be cool.
At this point in time, I have one thing I'm waiting for to call me back as far as something else is going on. But I'll let you know, Holly, but I'm pretty sure I can make it.
Otherwise, that's all I have to report on committees.
Madam Chair?
Field trip at?
It's printed out and in my desk. It's in my box. I printed it out. It's going to be all over, like one stop's going to be Pac-Tolo's Visitor Center. We're going to do that, and, but I do have it in my book, or in my box, if you want to look at it. Last one I went on last year was fantastic. We did a lot of ATV trails and, and I've seen spots that I didn't really knew existed. So that's why I like to go on.
But Ms. Holly, you said?
It is.
Commissioner DeSanto? Okay, cool.
And Madam Chair, I have one more comment or suggestion or maybe thing for everybody to start thinking about. I've been getting an inordinate number of calls, and you know me, I'm a person that thinks that people should be able to do with their property what they want to do with their property. But I'm going to go over our ordinance as far as public nuisance is concerned because I've gone out and inspected a couple of different properties. I think one of them, we're already working on the, the property that we basically decided to go out and strip the property and put in water and sewer for these people. But there's another property identical to that nearly that is being occupied by multiple different people over, over a period of time. The owner doesn't live there. The owner is from out of the area, and, and he's renting this house out, but it looks like people are squatting there at the same time. Renters move in and move out, and there's people visiting, and frankly, probably some drugs being sold in and out. Sheriff's Department's been there multiple times. Another house in the valley that is just cluttered with junk everywhere. And I think maybe our nuisance statute might need to be reworked a little bit so that we're, so that we don't, we can address. It almost seems to me that we can't even really do anything about these nuisance properties. But today, I'm going to go talk to Jerome about one property that, in my opinion, I've been on volunteer fire departments all my life, it's a fire hazard. And, and maybe we can get something done about this piece of property because of the fire hazard status. But I don't know what, what designates a fire hazard. But if this place went up, it'd take the whole neighborhood with it. So I think maybe we need to look at, at rewording that, that ordinance a bit as far as public nuisance is concerned, making it more specific and maybe a little wider. A little more restrictive.
Well, and that's why we got the inspectors for one thing. But people have a hard time when inspector goes out and, you know, you got to be somewhat proactive because if Mark's turning into Ron, then, then he's going to look at Ron's as well because usually it's a neighbor fight. But bottom line is, if you make it more stringent, more of those outlining areas in Pennington County, we'll have a lot of violations. I don't know if you drove around anytime soon, but not that, if we were proactive right now, I'll just tell you, you'd have a lot of violations in the outlining areas. And that mall, that area, it'd be mostly you guys' districts. But if you two would, are willing to move that forward, it would be okay.
And I hear the caution in your voice, Deb, because I have that same caution. I don't want it to be overused, but at the same time, there are some specific properties that are way over the top.
When you get into the safety, that's where you got to.
Yeah, but you know, that's one thing that we discussed just not that long ago, when we started talking about planning's budget, having the funding to abate the properties because that's where you get the action done to be able to go and do it. And then you got to lean on the property. I mean, that's something you're going to have to think about. You're going to have to have a budget to be able to make the action, otherwise all we're doing is sending letters.
Well, bottom line is, a lot of that's in your two's district, so if you guys would like to work on that, that would be good because.
Well, I'm starting to work on it today.
Well, I'm saying with Brittany, Brittany with the inspector and how the inspector plays that part. If, if you want to have a part in that, that's huge because those areas, it's not, it doesn't have to be just you guys, but I think when you come back, those complaints based are going to be a lot in your areas. So if you can work with Brittany on the inspector, what their job description is basically, and what you're looking for, and what that nuisance ordinance should change to in order to clean up the areas, but not be stringent enough where you go around and have 500 properties.
Right. Well, I'm not talking about building. I'm actually talking about junk.
No, I'm talking.
I'm not talking about building inspection. I'm talking about ordinance.
When he's not inspecting, when he's not inspecting, he's going to go and look and be the, what does Dwayne do?
Ordinance enforcement officer.
Yeah.
He's going to be helping with that. So do you see what I mean?
I see what you mean.
They'll be coordinating together, basically. All right.
Got you.
Just, just food for thought. Next is approval of vouchers, 1,000,965, 72217.
So moved.
Moved by Drews.
Second.
Second by Roskinick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Items from the public. There's nobody left. 24 executive session, let's see, SDCL 25 dash 2 dash 1, and personnel and facilities. So motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Moved by DeSanto.
Sorry.
Second by Drews. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Come on, Joan.
Moved by Drews, second by?
Me, DeSanto.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Motion, Roskinick?
I make a motion to hire Joshua Leitz as the Hill City Highway Foreman, starting as a grade 19, step 8, for an hourly salary of $28.38 effective September 1st, 2020.
Second.
Moved by Roskinick, second by DeSanto.
September, excuse me, September 21st.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. Motion to adjourn?
So moved. Yep, I guess.
Motion by Drews, second by LaCroy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.